Good evening and welcome to the April 20th, 2021 City Council Regular Meeting. The one time per year that we actually pass the gavel and introduce our new council. And along with that, later in the meeting, Councillor Bettine and I will be signing off and passing the gavel, if you will. So stay tuned for that. But we do have a number of items to conduct business with on the first portion of the agenda. And for those of you that are listening in, we do have, the council will reconvene after we pass the gavel for the new council to have a second portion of the meeting. So that's a little bit of the format of this evening's meeting. So with that, I'd like to call for a roll call, please. Ms. Phillips?
Councillor Bettine?
Here.
Councillor Noseworthy?
Present.
Councillor Yussa?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter? Mayor Brooke?
Here. Thank you so much, Amy. And that's the last time I'll probably ask you that. So that was well done. So with that, I'd like to ask if any of the councillors have, if they could identify any actual or perceived conflicts of interest for any of the items on the first portion of the agenda this evening. Seeing none, we'll move into item four on our agenda, which is public participation. And this section of the agenda is set aside for the public to provide comments or ask questions regarding items that are not scheduled for a public hearing or public testimony, or that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. City Council will not respond to questions from the dais or in this virtual format, but citizens can address their comments directly to City Council. As this is a virtual meeting, the avenues for public petition participation have been adjusted. The public may view the meeting live on Durango Dgov over the air on Channel 10.1 or streaming online with Durango.gov.org/DGOV. We'd like to introduce public participation at this point. And if you're in, watching via Zoom, just do the raise hand function and our moderator, Mitchell, will invite you into our meeting this evening. And if you are calling in on phone, just push star nine, and then once Mitchell receives you, just push star six to unmute. With all that information, a little too much information, feel free to speak up and you'll be given three minutes to talk about any particular topic this evening. Mitchell, do we have any folks in the public participation tonight?
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. We do have quite a few in our attendee list, and I do see some hands raised. So without further ado, the first person I see is Kirby. Kirby, I've invited you to speak. Please unmute yourself, give us your first and last name for the record, and whether or not you are a city resident, and then you have three minutes.
Hi there. Kirby, I'm using his computer. My name is Karen Pontius. I live at 288 Animus View Drive in the city of Durango. My comment is, I'm very much in favor of the Colorado Senate Bill 21-62, which is called, I think it's called Concerning Measures to Reduce Jail Populations. I see this as only a first step in repairing societal damage done by overpolicing and over incarceration. I won't bore you all with statistics of our country having 2.3 million people in jails and prisons right now, more than any other country on earth. But one statistic makes sense. One-third of Americans have an immediate family member who is or has been in the system, just like me. And you can research it at prisonpolicy.org, which is a great site for that. So when I heard that the council voted to oppose this state bill after hearing from the Durango police, but without hearing from the bill's proponents, it concerned me greatly. Change does come from the local level. Indeed, it does, and I believe in that. But opposing this bill keeps our city's head in the sand about the problem described above. Just because Durango doesn't experience the types of problems big cities and other small towns have, doesn't mean we shouldn't stay connected to progressive changes in our state. This bill may not even cause one effect in Durango, but it sure will statewide. This bill will not limit arrests for violent felonies. It will not lessen protections for domestic violence victims. It will not give a free pass for those who fail to appear in court. It will not drive an increase in crime because we've reduced jail population. This bill does empower sheriffs to manage jail populations. It increases summons in lieu of arrests. It limits pretrial detention to those who pose a safety or flight risk. I'm in total agreement with State Senator, Colorado State Senator Pete Lee, who wrote in support of the bill. He asked, who is harmed by these backward policies the most? Not me. It's statistically, people of color, people with disabilities, and people living in poverty. Saying we should do more to end poverty while advocating for cash bail is both privileged and impractical. At its core, SB 21-62 is a racial justice bill aimed at undoing some of the harms to communities of color wrought by overpolicing, excessive incarceration, and cash bail. End quote. I add that neither the Durango PD or the City Council is harmed by the current policies either. So why would they want change? Just because it doesn't affect you personally doesn't mean we shouldn't be thinking about preventing, excuse me, I read that wrong, doesn't mean we should prevent positive change. We are the only developed country that relies on a cash bond system for presumptively innocent arrestees. It means that poor people remain behind bars, losing jobs, housing and family supports, while people with money remain free to fight their case. The equal protection clause is violated by such disparate policies. This bill begins to change it. And I'll remind everyone, a 16-year-old Kalief Browder was kept in Rikers Island for three years without even being charged because he couldn't raise the cash bail, and I think it was $300. He supposedly stole a backpack. His charges were later dropped. He was released and less than two years later committed suicide, haunted by the many beatings he endured and the two years in solitary confinement that were imposed on him. So even though we spend a larger portion of government money on policing than any other nation, mass shootings like what happened in Boulder continue to occur almost daily. So Senator Pete Lee said, the answer is not to lock up more people pretrial for low-level crimes who pose no threat to public safety. We've been trying that approach for decades, and it has failed us from a safety perspective, a racial justice perspective, and a human dignity perspective. This bill will not solve mass incarceration or racial injustice, but it's a thoughtful, measured approach to reduce excessive and unnecessary incarceration and alleviate suffering while protecting public safety. Safety. So I urge our council to take a look at the bigger picture. Supporting this state-level measure can only add to calls from other states to adopt such legislation. Imagine if we adopted such a law on a federal level. It could drastically change the, quote, "lock 'em up" culture we currently endure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. Ms. Pontius, I should say. So thank you for that thoughtful statement. Mitchell, do we have other folks in the queue?
Yes, Mayor. The next person on the list is Jessie. Jessie, I have invited you to speak. Please unmute yourself, give us your first and last name, and whether or not you are a city resident for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hi, y'all. Can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, I'm Jessie Broom. I'm actually calling you all the way up from Denver, Colorado, although I've been to Durango and I have fished in your beautiful Animus River, and I love it down there. I'm calling in because, just like our last caller, the bill SB 21-62 that y'all have voted to oppose, it affects the rest of our state, and that's why I wanted to call you today. I have become increasingly horrified at learning the stories of police violence and the gross inequities of criminal justice system that we've seen around our country, obviously, but we have them here in Colorado. I wonder if you all know about the brutal deaths of Elijah McClain, Reverend Marvin Booker, Michael Marshall, and dozens of others who died at the hands of Colorado police? I wonder if you know about the stories of Jared Thistle, Suzanne Burgess, and Jackson Mays, who struggled with mental illness and died by suicide while being held on bail they couldn't afford? These Colorans died as a direct result of being held pretrial for low-level offenses. They never posed any public safety threat, and they died horrible, senseless deaths. And I'm sure if you learn more about these stories, you would be horrified by them, too. But what I hope, what is clear to me, and what I hope becomes clear to you, is that it is our systems that are responsible for these deaths, obviously along with the cops that have perpetrated them, but our system mandates that armed law enforcement arrest people who pose no public safety threat, throw them in jail, and then hold them on bond. Think about that for a minute, because this system disproportionately harms our communities of color, our houseless neighbors, and those struggling with addiction and mental illness. In addition, our bond system criminalizes the poor, destabilizes families, and in some cases, like the ones I mentioned above, this system kills. SB 21-62, like the previous speaker said, is simply asking police to prioritize giving a summons over automatically arresting people. Think about that. It's just a shift. It's just asking police, instead of automatically grabbing someone and caging them, it's asking them, it's wanting to change the culture of policing that would give thousands of Colorans a chance that Elijah, Marvin, Michael, Susan, Jared, Jackson, and dozens of others didn't have. I want to thank your sheriff in Durango, Sean Smith, for supporting this bill. I think that's actually quite courageous. You may have heard police opposition to this bill, and I want you to ask yourselves why they might be opposing it. Is it really, is it really for public safety, or is it because that is the control that they exert? I see that my time is out, and I just want to make the last point, that if we want to, if we're truly concerned about public safety, we have to address the systems that are harming human lives. SB 21-62 was drafted with the input of Colorado law enforcement. It's supported by the Attorney General, and it will save lives. I encourage you to look at passsb21062.org to learn more about the bill. Please educate yourselves, and please consider supporting. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Mitchell, for the timer. I didn't, I didn't have everybody on the grid here, so I didn't see the time. So we will watch the time a little better as we move forward and invite the next guest into our public participation session.
The next guest I have on the list is Paul. Paul, I have invited you to speak. Please unmute yourself, give us your first and last name, and whether or not you are a city resident for the record, and you have three minutes.
Thank you very much, Mitchell. My name is Paul DeBelle, and I am a Durango resident. And I am also asking that you reconsider your position on Senate Bill 21-62. I'll start by briefly stipulating that I've interacted with a few of you in the past as my role as faculty advisor for FLC Engage, as I teach at the college. And while I'd like to thank you for all that you do to connect with our students, I'm very, very explicitly not here in that role tonight. I am here as a private citizen and as a Durango resident who is very much moved by my conviction that this is an important harm reduction bill. By decreasing wealth-based pretrial incarceration and setting clearer, more stringent standards for arrest, we can safely address overcrowding, save taxpayer dollars, and decrease the influence of our state government in perpetuating inequities on the basis of race, ability, and wealth. This bill could help us safely uphold some of the most important values of our society: liberty and justice for all. Indeed, this really is a bill about protecting individual liberty for all. When community members are arrested for nonviolent crimes and then incarcerated because, like most people in the United States today, they do not have hundreds or thousands of dollars on hand to post bond, they have lost their liberty. This loss of liberty means separation from family, and it means not being able to show up for work. Of course, this does the most harm to the incarcerated, their loved ones, and their communities. That said, these injustices cost us all in the nearly $100 a day taxpayers spend on each person in Colorado jails, and in the incalculable downstream social and economic harms of separating families and putting people's livelihoods and homes in jeopardy. For these reasons and more, I'd like to ask you to reconsider your position on SB 21-62. Thank you very much for your time and for your reconsideration of this matter.
Thank you, Mr. DeBelle. And next comments, Mitchell?
Yes, Mayor. The next person I have on the list is Brian. Brian, I have invited you to speak. Please unmute yourself, give us your first and last name for the record, and whether or not you are a city resident, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Brian Showalter. I am not a city resident. I live in the county. However, I'm a defense attorney in town. I've been a defense attorney in town for 22 years with Whitney and Showalter, represented many citizens of Durango. And I also am asking you guys to reconsider your, to support Senate Bill 21-62. I want to talk about maybe some sort of practical aspects of what this will do. What defense attorneys know is your ability to fight a case, to resolve a case fairly hinges a lot on your ability to be out of custody. In other words, if you're in custody, you're more likely to want to get out and, for example, accept a plea bargain to something that maybe you didn't do, or maybe a plea bargain is something that's not fair. If you can get out of jail, you can meet with your attorney, you have resources, and you can fairly fight your case. So essentially, what happens is people without resources, poor people, wind up having their ability to fight a case, to effectively, you know, help their attorney damaged, hurt, because, you know, of these bail laws that really have no correlation to what you did, and are more, you know, let's just say it, you know, it's based on wealth, on, you know, your ability, how much money you have, your ability to fight a case. You know, and just one other thing I want to say, you know, I've represented people on all spectrums economically, from the homeless to people who are well off. And, you know, I can tell you that my clients who, for example, are homeless, who have limited means, I will talk to them the next day, and they will tell me stories about, you know, all my stuff got stolen. I lost my job. I couldn't, I couldn't get to work, you know, this morning because I was in jail. It has real repercussions. My pets didn't get fed. My pets got hurt. So, you know, outside of sort of the theoretical stuff, the other, it's not theoretical, the important stuff the other speakers have talked about, I just want to put sort of a human, local face of people in this town who have, you know, lost their jobs, who have had, you know, pets that were lost or didn't get fed, who were traumatized. I mean, it's essentially traumatizing people because of their economic situation, and it's completely unnecessary. It's just not necessary. It doesn't have anything to do with safety. I know Chief Brammer has talked about that. I respectfully disagree with him. I don't think this is a safety issue. This bill has a provision in it for safety situations. So I appreciate you guys' time and listening, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Showalter. I appreciate it, and very concise. Mitchell, more participants in this evening's discussion?
Yes, Mayor. The next person on the list is Rebecca. Rebecca, it's your turn to speak. Please give us your first and last name for the record, and whether or not you are a city resident, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Wallace. I am a Denver resident. I'm senior staff attorney and senior policy counsel at the ACLU of Colorado, and I am here to urge City Council to reconsider its position in opposition to SB 21-62. I am confident that many people on this council care greatly about reducing mass incarceration, about cash bonds, racial disparities in the criminal justice system, and jail populations. And yet, with extremely limited, one-sided information, this council voted against the bill that smartly and safely would have met these goals. This country is addicted to incarceration. We incarcerate more people and at a higher rate than any other country in the world, and our jails have increased 800% since 1970, and that has been mostly driven by an increase in unconvicted people, people who are held pretrial solely because they cannot pay money bonds, not because of dangerousness. Now, how do these people get into jail? Through the unbridled exercise of police discretion to arrest in the field, which has led to more than 50% of arrests being for nonviolent, lower-level offenses. Arrests for these offenses are a flashpoint for violent confrontation that is absolutely unjustified, given the level of offense, and the violence is disproportionately directed toward Black and Brown people. You know their names. They've been said tonight across the nation and here in Colorado. This cannot go on. We can safely reduce these arrests while protecting public safety, and SB 62 does just that. I know that you heard differently from the Durango police chief, but that is only one perspective, and some of the information you received about the bill was not accurate. If the bill was the dangerous law that was described to you, it would not have the support of the chief law enforcement officer in the state, Attorney General Phil Weiser, Department of Public Safety, which runs the State Patrol and CBI, and it certainly would not have the support of the sheriff that you trust, Durango Sheriff Sean Smith. We worked with Sheriff Smith collaboratively for months on this bill, trying to get the right balance of maximizing pretrial freedom while ensuring public safety. Contrary to what you've heard, mandatory summons on this bill are only for nonviolent misdemeanors and municipal offenses. For any victim crime and any low level of felony, arrest is always allowed when there's a safety risk or a risk of reoffense. High-level felonies, statutory crimes of violence, and domestic violence are not in this bill. They're not there. This is my conclusion. This council voted against SB 21-62 based on extremely limited information from the chief, not from any proponents or even local law enforcement that supports the bill. This is not how good decision-making is made. Good decision-making is made by gathering information from all sides, proponents and opponents, law enforcement and civilians, people who have been prosecuted, and people who have been victimized. That is not what has happened here, and I urge this council to remove its position of opposition, and if it wishes to take a position on the bill, to invite a full public hearing. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. And next, we'll try to, appears we have some, quite a few public statements this evening, so we will try to move through this in a bishop manner. And so, Mitchell, if we can invite the next guest.
Of course, Mayor. The next person on the list is Rich. Rich, I have invited you to speak. Please unmute yourself, give us your first and last name for the record, and whether or not you are a city resident, and you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Hello, my name is Rich Hollein. I reside in Hesperus, just beyond city limits, but I've had the pleasure of serving for several years on the Durango Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and from that vantage point have had a chance to watch council at work for several years. And I'm really wanting to simply express my appreciation and recognition of the exemplary service, public service that I believe Mayor Brooke and Chris Bettine, our outgoing councillors, have provided over the past several years. I think you guys, during your tenure, your actions have shown consistent commitment to genuine transparency and open communication with the community, adherence to the code of conduct as spelled out as guidelines for public officials, and you've honored and respected the advice and talents of your advisory boards. I think when you've dealt with many challenging issues, you've been very open to communicate as broadly with the full community as you could, and not limit it to just particular constituents. I think you've been very, just your whole posture, your whole standards for how you've performed on council have been really, really admirable. And I'm hoping our newly-elected councillors will see you as very solid role models for how they continue to do the good hard work of city governance. You guys will be missed, and I'm just very, very grateful that you were willing to be open-minded in your thinking, willing to collect data from across a wide swath of sources. When you had assumptions about various policies or procedures, you're very open about that. I think when you communicated with our boards, you did that with the understanding that it would be very open and overt in appropriate settings, and I appreciate that. I'm just going to say that I am confident I'm not alone in saying you will be missed. And I think you've represented the city very, very well, and I'm honored to know you and have had a chance to contribute a little bit to your thinking and your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollein, and thank you so much for your tenure on Parks and Recreation Board as well. So with that, we'll move on to our next speaker, please.
The next person on the list is Donna. Donna, I have invited you to speak. Please unmute yourself, give us your first and last name for the record, and whether or not you are a city resident, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Donna Mae Bogcott, and I live in Durango, the county, actually, on 250. I am the co-founder, president, and executive director of Community Compassion Outreach, CCO, a group working together to craft permanent and real solutions to end homelessness. I'm here today to speak up for the homeless population of Durango by urging this council to support SB 21-62, a jail population management tools bill. This bill is a step in moving Colorado away from its reliance on jails as a solution to all societal problems. Like most of America, Colorado faces complex problems in our society, including homelessness, substance use addiction, and too many of our neighbors struggling as they live in poverty. While professing a dedication to eliminating homelessness and supporting our neighbors, state actors continue to place members of our community experiencing homelessness behind bars, despite how it further destabilizes people, are risking their access to housing, medical care, jobs, and custody of their kids. This must stop. By adopting a narrow set of jail population reduction policies aimed at keeping people accused of low-level crimes out of jail, SB 21-62 helps to decriminalize homelessness and keep people who are not a safety risk out of jail. This bill would have a profound impact on the homeless community of Durango. Municipal codes target as, and disproportionately impact residents that are homeless for activities they must perform in the course of daily living. This council, I am sure, is aware of the many sections in Durango's municipal codes that effectively criminalize homelessness. Section 17-57, which makes it unlawful for any person to camper shelter in or upon any city-owned or managed property, and Section 17-43, which criminalizes panhandling. In fear of getting arrested, unhoused residents of Durango have had to hide, search for secluded spots to sleep, behind dumpsters, in the shadows of alleyway garages, in shovs along Animus River, or deep in the canyons of the San Juan National Forest. Many avoid Purple Cliffs encampment because of the steep terrain, or they don't feel safe in a place not adequately managed, or they avoid crowds. At the end, homelessness will not be fixed by putting our neighbors behind bars for nonviolent offenses. They are experiencing extreme poverty, and they can't hold on to employment while sitting in jail, waiting for court date. So the most reasonable fix is for municipalities as yours and partners to invest in programs such as health and counseling services, shelters, transitional housing, subsidized housing, and so on. So I want to thank you, and I find it, it's imperative that the council consider the homeless population of Durango.
Thank you, Donna Mae. Appreciate your comments. And with that, we'll move to the next speaker.
Next person on the list is Elizabeth. Elizabeth, I've invited you to speak. Please unmute yourself, give us your first and last name for the record, and whether or not you are a city resident, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. Can you hear me, sir?
Yes, we sure can.
Thank you. Sorry. Despite living on Zoom, I never know quite if I'm doing it right. My name is Elizabeth Debs. I'm not a city resident. I'm an abolitionist based in Arapahoe land. I co-direct the Colorado Freedom Fund, where we have bought pretrial freedom for over 1,000 Colorans across the state, paying ransom for folks held in our jails due to, only to their being unable to afford the cost of their own freedom. Why is a, why is a woman from a town far to your northeast testifying at Durango City Council? Well, because in full transparency, I heard that y'all had opposed SB 62, and that the vote was largely based on police advice, and honestly, I just felt in my spirit that as a survivor, as a victim, I needed to make sure that you heard more perspectives. I have been working for years to safely bring our neighbors home from Colorado cages, and working for months on the legislation that is now SB 62. SB 62, councillors, it balances the critical goals of pretrial liberty with community safety. When we say community safety, that must include safety from police terror, safety from overprosecution, freedom to safely survive mental health and substance misuse challenges not in unsafe cages. Those things are public safety, too, and SB 62 will help us do these things. I wish we could see each other right now, councillors. I wish we could see each other right now, councilors. I had drafted very brief remarks, planning to join you tonight, and then today, as you may have heard, sorry, a police officer was convicted for killing George Floyd. And no doubt you've seen signs that said, that say justice for George Floyd, and I want you to understand in the most direct sense that what George Floyd was accused of, not charged with, because he didn't live to be charged, he was accused of passing, he was accused of trying to use a fake $20 bill. In the state of Colorado, that would be a class five felony, which when we pass this bill is no longer going to be arrestable. So the thing that happened to him, someone being justified by law in putting their hands on that man over $20 is going to be illegal. What you saw in Loveland to one of your neighbors, to one of our seniors who was tackled over allegedly stealing, this is not even what I was gonna say, I'm sorry, but who was tackled for allegedly stealing $14 or $18 from Walmart, when we pass this bill, that won't be allowed. It won't happen, you won't know their names. I want to just say that much of the opposition to SB 62 has been misinformation at best, but frankly, councilors, much more of it has been outright racist dog whistles. With the most hostile opposition to this truly-
We appreciate your comments, but we do need to wrap up in about 20 seconds.
Yes, sir. Most of the, coming from, sorry, much of the opposition coming from truly progressive legislation, sorry, coming from places that I thought naively, that I hoped were progressive. I want to ask you as an abolitionist to do something I don't often, which is listen to your sheriff. You managed to elect a sheriff who got it right. Please trust him, trust his guidance, and reconsider your position on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Epps. And with that, Mitchell, do we have another speaker?
We do, and I wanted to remind everybody in the attendee list that we are in the middle of public participation, so if you are here to speak to council about an item that does not otherwise appear on the agenda tonight, now is your opportunity. So please utilize the raise hand function, or if you have called in on the phone, press star nine to raise your hand. The next person on the list is Lynn. Lynn, I have invited you to speak. Please unmute yourself, give us your first and last name for the record, and whether or not you are a city resident, and you have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. I'm Lynn Schaller, and I am a city resident. I'm a local attorney who advocates for civil, social and racial justice, and I join those around the state and the country who support criminal justice reform. So I do ask that you also reconsider your opposition to Senate Bill 2162. There has been a lot of misinformation about the bill. The letter from the Colorado Association of Chiefs of Police, first paragraph mentions violent crime, murder, assault, robbery, violent crime with firearms, and violent crime with dangerous weapons. None of those high level crimes are part of this bill. The bill only applies to nonviolent offenses and municipal crimes like traffic cases. Next in that letter, it mentions ACLU claims this bill increases officer discretion. That is simply not true when the word "shall" is used, but that sentence disregards the exemptions in this bill. It says unless it's a violent crime, unless it falls under the Victims' Right Act, unless the person poses a safety threat, unless the person is a repeat offender. Under those circumstances, a low level offense can result in an arrest. The bill also allows for personal reconnaissance bonds, meaning that you don't have to put up any money to get out of jail for low level offenses. Again, unless the defendant is a flight risk, unless there's a public safety risk, or unless the defendant is harassing victims. And the bill doesn't mean that the accused gets a free pass from their criminal conduct. It doesn't mean the accused never pays a fine or goes to jail. It's just the initial arrest. Upon conviction, they can be sentenced to jail or fines, or both. Several law enforcement opposition letters that you received mention that summons and release results in the defendant continuing to commit criminal acts, and that assumes that the defendant is guilty before being tried, and also assumes that the person will continue crimes. The chief of police said that they didn't have input on this bill, but they were invited to the table, so why didn't they collaborate on this like Sean Smith did? The supporters include our Attorney General Phil Weiser, who's the leading public safety official of Colorado, the Department of Public Safety, the DA from Denver and Jeff Co. These are not lunatic fringe people. These are prosecutors and respected organizations, along with our sheriff, Sean Smith, who manages our jail. So I do ask you to reconsider your vote on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schaller, and I might ask other people speaking to the same topic to, if you have new information, be sure to point that out in any of the comments that are highly repetitive in a number of the testimonies that we've heard this evening. Understand that we have heard that, and if we can, in the realm of brevity, understand that we do have much of this information, so if it's redundant, please try to give us new information to the extent possible. We do appreciate your comments. With that, Mitchell, if we can move forward.
Next person on the list is Helen. Helen, I've invited you to speak. Please unmute yourself, give us your first and last name for the record, and whether or not you are a city resident, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Helen Griffiths, and I'm the public policy strategist at the ACLU. I know that last week you made the decision to oppose SB 2162, yet today we ask you to hear public comment from some of your constituents who represent the united and diverse coalition urging for the support of this bill. It took eight months of stakeholding for the bill to reach its current form, and in that process, it's gained the support of law enforcement, survivor groups and community organizers. There are public safety officials and law enforcement in support of the bill. For example, Attorney General Phil Weiser, the Colorado Department of Public Safety, the Law Enforcement Action Partnership, District Attorney Alexis King, District Attorney Beth McCann, District Attorney Alonso Payne, and your own county sheriff, Sean Smith, who's in charge of running and managing your jail, all support the bill. The Colorado District Attorney's Council is neutral. If this bill did what you heard last week, none of these organizations, and I mean not a single one, would be in a neutral or supportive position. Their jobs are to keep their communities safe, and they recognize that incarcerating people for low level offenses does not do this. There are survivors in support of this bill. The largest victims rights groups in the state, including the Colorado Organization for Victim Assistance, Violence Free Colorado, and the Colorado Coalition Against Sexual Assault are all neutral. The Colorado Crime Survivors Network supports this bill, and Charlotta Evans, who founded the organization and lost her three-year-old son to gun violence, supports this bill along with countless survivors. They recognize that spending millions incarcerating people pretrial instead of on real violence prevention does not keep us safe. There are 60 community organizations that support this bill, ranging from organizations that represent immigrant communities, people with disabilities, people experiencing homelessness, women, people with mental health issues, people facing criminal charges, young people, and working on issues ranging from hunger to public health, from public safety to harm reduction. They have joined together to champion a bill that will keep our most vulnerable communities safe. There are also racial justice orgs that support this bill, including the Black Democratic Legislative Caucus, the Colorado Democratic Latino Caucus, Black Lives Matter, NAACP, and the families of Michael Marshall and the families of Rev. Marvin Booker, both of whom were killed in jail while pretrial on misdemeanors. This bill will literally save lives, and community leaders recognize this. I say I have 30 seconds. Yet despite all this range of support, you only consider the testimony from your local law enforcement. You mentioned the repetitive nature of testimony from your constituents, and yet the reason people are here is because there was no public comment, no involvement, and no consideration of the expertise of your reform-minded law enforcement leaders who understand that this bill will build better and safer communities. As city council, you have a responsibility to consider all the views of your community, not just your police chief or DA. We ask you to respectfully reconsider this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Griffiths. And Mitchell, further comment?
Yes, the next person on the list is June. June, it's your turn to speak. Please unmute yourself, give us your first and last name for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name is June Fraser Thistle. Our son Jared Jason Thistle was an addict. The entire time he lived in Colorado, he was an addict. His drugs of choice were methamphetamines and heroin, the most insidious fall drugs, and the most difficult to kick. Years of bad drug use led to mental health issues, the worst of which for Jared was paranoia. He felt there were people out to get him, so he carried a firearm. No amount of discussion could convince Jared of this simple fact. He would never be able to leave Colorado unless he gave up that firearm, but his paranoia convinced him they needed it for protection. Jared's problem was circular. Addiction led to mental health issues, which led to prison, over and over again. For 21 years, he lived in this cycle, much of it in a Colorado prison system. We had plans to remove him from Colorado. His parole had ended, it was time. He was close to making it home alive. It was his dream to return to Washington State and open a home mechanic shop on our property. He was a terrific mechanic. Just ask anyone who works at Alamosa Sheriff's Office, they all had their vehicles fixed by Jared. We offered Jared this dream to come home and the condition he undergo and complete drug treatment, but suicide happened instead. January of this year, it happened. Within a cell, in your own prison system, that system failed to provide addiction treatment and mental health counseling, and with that failure, Jared's life and our dreams ended inside your cell. Why was he there? Jared faced a pending charge of theft under $50, $500 and carrying an illegal weapon. He also had a bond, $5,000 posted, but he knew that we were long past paying, so his only option was incarceration. But he also deserves support for his medical and mental illnesses. He did not deserve to die alone in a jail cell. Jared's suicide was a shock. So how did he get to this place? The answer is clear. He was lost in the hopelessness of pending prison, the harsh reality of detox and a heart condition that required medication he did not have in that jail cell. The tragic circular pattern of his life was too much. The Alamosa District Attorney asked the judge to grant Jared a PR bond, but it was denied. We'll never know if that bond would have made the difference between life and death. So let's stick to one fact. Detoxing in a jail cell, pending trial, with no intervention provided, is on you, Colorado, and it's also on the judge who made this decision. I speak not just for our son Jared, but for those with stories similar to Jared sitting in your jail right now, and those who will surely follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thistle. And Mitchell? Another, another-
Yes, Mayor, we do have, I see one more. It's a phone number ending in 2752. Before I permit this person to speak, I just want to remind everybody, if you are here in the attendee list for public participation, please raise your hand now. Okay, phone number ending in 2752. I have admitted you to speak. Press star six to unmute yourself, and give us your first and last name for the record, and whether or not you are a city resident. You have three minutes.
My name is Sweetie Marbury, and yes, I am a city resident. There are two issues I'm concerned with tonight. The first issue is an article I read in the Durango Herald, which indicated that council was looking at city land as a possible use for housing. The land that was mentioned was parking lots on Second Avenue, and I'm calling to say that I oppose the use of Second Avenue parking lots for housing because of the disruptions to employees in the central business district. Employees park during the day in these lots, and visitors park at night in the lots to go downtown. Business has been very fragile in Durango, and the local economy in the central business district has suffered for over a year. Disruptions with construction that could last from 12 to 18 or more months would be a disaster for the downtown economy. A better site, which I hope you would consider, is the gravel lot near the Office Depot on the road to Lake Nighthorse, where city equipment is stored. I encourage the new council to look at the gravel lot for any type of city land to be considered for housing and not disrupt the central business district employee parking on Second Avenue. The second issue concerns the previous council had approved replacing the basketball and volleyball courts as part of the renovation to the sewer plant, in conjunction with building the new sewer plant. A promise made to voters is a promise to be kept to the public. I support the basketball and volleyball courts to be constructed at Santa Rita. The Parks and Rec Board supports replacing what was removed, and more importantly, the public expects the heavily used courts to be replaced. Meetings were held with a great deal of public input on these prized amenities. The budgets have the money to accommodate these new projects. It would be in bad faith for the council to reneg on a promise made to replace these courts. I support the supplemental request to restore the long plan for courts at Santa Rita. Not only did locals use those courts, but also out-of-town visitors used the amenities and then ate in our restaurants. I observed many nights, young men and old men playing basketball on the courts down at Santa Rita. The local economy will benefit from keeping promises to the voters, or the new council will lose the trust it desires. And also, thank you, Mayor Brooke, and thank you, Counselor Bateen, for your years of service, your patience and your wisdom that led Durango. We love you.
Thank you, Ms. Marbury. And with that, Mitchell, do we have any other public participants this evening?
Mayor, I do not see anybody else who has raised their hand. We still have a lengthy list of attendees. If you are here to speak during public participation, now is your opportunity.
Give folks a little bit of a chance, and before we move on. Okay, well, if there's no other folks, we have our next item on the agenda is review of the consent agenda. I would like to ask council if they would consider a adjustment to the agenda at this point, and that would be to, it's been requested by Counselor Bateen to move administrative item 18.1, which is a discussion on possible action concerning the Santa Rita Park funding approval, and that would occur during the new council portion of this meeting, and ask if that might be better considered under an agenda with the current council. And so I'd like to either have a vote or a concurrence. If we need a vote, we can do that if people are, if council is accepting of that agenda modification, we can, we can move forward with that, with that adjustment. So if, do we have a thumbs up, or do we need to bring this to a motion and a vote?
Not because I am voting, but I'm just wondering, rules of order, if, can anyone tell us whether or not this actually needs a vote or just a thumbs up? Dirk?
And I'd also, Dean, I guess I'd like a reminder to everyone of that last week, when there were four of us present, you and I supported it being on the second half of the agenda. Counselor Baxter was ambivalent, and Counselor Yousaf supported it being on the first half, so a discussion was made.
Actually, I was, I was supportive of current council taking action, and so it was-
After I raised the fact that the IAB had not been privy to even discussing this, I'm pretty certain you would be-
I would accept the motion to, for this consideration, and if I hear a motion from, Counselor Bateen brought it, brought the issue forward in his absence, so do I hear a motion to move this item from 18.1 to consideration under the administration portion of the, of the new council's agenda, or the-
Oh, moved.
-council's agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have a second? I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion to relocate this particular agenda item, so maybe you have a roll call, please.
Counselor Yousaf?
Yes.
Counselor Bateen?
Yes.
Counselor Nisworthy?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Sorry about that. Maybe that was intentional. Yes.
Mayor Broke?
Yes. Thank you, sir, for that disruption, and I apologize for the readjustment, but thank you, councilors, and so we will, for those listening in, we will have a, it won't be a public hearing, it is an administrative- it is an administrative item, but we'll have a discussion relative to that topic in, under the existing council agenda. So with that, we'll move on to proclamations and presentations. And we have two proclamations this evening. The first is Arbor Week, so I will read that. And I'm not sure if we have somebody in the wings to, oh, Kathy Metz will be the recipient of the Arbor Week proclamation, so thank you so much. Look forward to this. Arbor Week, April 19th through April 23rd, 2021. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than 1 billion trees in Nebraska, Unithum, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas Durango, Colorado is a city located in a natural setting of great beauty, and whereas Durango, Colorado has recognized, been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its enhancement of urban, the urban forest, and whereas the Parks and Recreation Department of the City of Durango will assist citizens, businesses, and organizations in making Durango a more beautiful place to live and do business. Now therefore, I, Dean Bricky, Mayor of the City of Durango, do hereby proclaim the week of April 19th through April 23rd, 2021 to be Arbor Week, and urge citizens to celebrate by planting trees and experience the importance of trees by spending time outside enjoying the community forest. Therefore, I, Dean Bricky, proclaim this Arbor Week. Thank you. And Kathy Metz, do you have a few words to say about our, our urban forest?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Bricky and members of city council. This is Arbor Week, and we have several celebrations planned with our local students at various schools. And the one thing I wanted to point out is we're planting a moon tree, which is a sycamore tree, at Rusia Park in honor of our astronaut locally in Durango, and certainly encourage anyone that's interested to attend that ceremony that will be on the 22nd. We have added 473 trees to the urban forest in 2020, and that brings our inventory up to over 11,500 trees in Durango that we manage and maintain for the city residents. So just want everyone to enjoy Arbor Week and plant trees. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Metz. And with that, we'll move on to the next proclamation, which is a Civitan Awareness Month proclamation. And add a sip of water, and I'll try to read this a little more effectively. Proclamation for Civitan Awareness Month, which is April 2021. Whereas Civitan International was founded in 1917 in Birmingham, Alabama, and whereas the over 40,000 members in over 1,300 clubs worldwide work together and make their communities better places, and whereas Civitan has contributed millions of dollars in volunteer hours to help the people with development disabilities, and whereas club projects provide citizens with meaningful involvement in their communities, and whereas Civitan promotes good citizenship and emphasizes its responsibilities, and whereas Civitan is recognized for its support of research and treatment of developmental disabilities through its funding of the International Research Center, and whereas here in Durango, the De Colores Civitan Club embodies the ideals of Civitan in our own community. Now therefore, I, Dean Bricky, Mayor of the City of Durango, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 to be Civitan Awareness Month in Durango, Colorado. And do we have a speaker for Civitan Club to receive this proclamation?
Hi. How are you? Hi. I'm Mike Phillips, and I am the president of the De Colores Civitan Club here in Durango. And I'd like to thank the city for recognizing April 2021 as Civitan Awareness Month. Our club was started in 1989 by Lon Erwin and has been part of the great Southwest District of Civitan since its inception. We're a small club built around members who want to help our community through volunteerism, and more importantly, help support our friends with intellectual and developmental disabilities. We are a club of, we have more time and talent than we do treasure, so we do try to help out where we can. Last year was a difficult year for our club, as it was for most nonprofits, I would imagine, but 2021 is shaping up to be a better year. Some of the events and projects we've been part of so far this year include Tim Tebow's Night to Shine. We delivered Valentine's cupcakes to Sunshine Gardens. We are currently running a food drive to benefit the Durango Food Bank, and we are collecting food through the end of the month, which can be dropped off at either Mount Bike Specialist or Bank of Colorado, the main avenue branch. We're doing our highway cleanup of Lightner Creek this Friday afternoon, so if you see us out there, please slow down a little bit and say hi. And we are working on some gift bags for Teacher Appreciation Week next month. Some of the other stuff we have coming up, we hope this summer, the Dream League, which is put on by the Parks and Rec Department. We really like helping out with that project. And then we do help the Rocky Mountain Chocolate Factory with their bloomer sale in the fall. That's one of our main fundraisers. And you know, when you're handing out chocolate-covered Oreos, you can't help but start the holidays off right. So we're always looking for new members. You can contact me down at Mount Bike Specialist or Christine Phillips of Bank of Colorado. And once again, I'd like to thank the city for recognizing De Colores Civitan with this proclamation.
Mike, thanks so much. You're looking great in that shirt, by the way. Very sporting tonight. And yeah, it's a different look for you, and we much appreciate that. And thanks for the shout out for Lon Erwin, who is, I now understand, was the founder of the Civitan Club locally. So thanks and good luck, and thanks for your continued work.
All right. Thank you so much.
With that, we move on to the consent agenda, a portion of our meeting. And the consent agenda is intended to allow city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There has been no separate discussion of these items unless a council member would request removal of a consent agenda item from the consent agenda and then be considered separately. With that, we'll have a reading of the consent agenda. Well, I might just, and then we'll ask if there is any councilors would like to remove any item on the consent agenda. So Ms. Phillips?
Items 6.1 through 6.3 are approval of minutes. 6.1, the regular meeting of March 16th, 2021. 6.2, the city council joint study session of March 24th, 2021. And 6.3, the regular meeting of April 6th, 2021. Items 6.4 through 6.7 are discussion and possible action items. 6.4 concerns the acceptance of the 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and commitment to the incorporation of recommendations concerning adjustments and best practices. 6.5 concerns resolution R. 202117, approving a tax increment financing agreement between the City of Durango and the Durango Renewal Partnership and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. Item 6.6 concerns approval of the updated Boards and Commissions Rules and Procedure Manual. 6.7 concerns approval of the Capital Improvement Plan Policy. And item 6.8 is final approval of ordinance O. 2021-8, abandoning a portion of the public right-of-way adjacent to property at 170 West 29th Street and declaring an effective date.
Thank you so much. And with that, is there any councillor that would like to have any item on the consent agenda removed for consideration? I see councillor Baxter, Mayor Pro Tim Baxter.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to remove 6.6 and 6.7, please.
6.6 and 6.7. All right, any others, any other councilors? All right. With that, I'd like to have a motion to, enter into motion to approve the consent agenda, not inclusive of 6.6 and 6.7.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
Councillor Bateen?
Yes.
Councillor Nosworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Bricky?
Yes. With that, we'll move on to consideration of 6.6, which is a discussion on possible action regarding approval of the updated Boards and Commissions Rules and Procedure Manual. And I'll ask Mayor Pro Tim Baxter to explain her request.
Thank you. In going through the manual, there were several things that either didn't seem applicable to the situation and/or omissions, or maybe things we might want to change. I sent a list of those to staff, and that list came back from staff to all of council, so if you have it, you could look at it. One of the things that I think needs to be included is when we talk about telephonic participation, that we include electronic, because now that's kind of the way that we're doing this. And in reality, I think we need to revisit that electronic policy. I know that the city court, Amy Phillips, had suggested we do that, and I would like to see us find a time for doing that. There was one page, page 26, that actually didn't print properly on the page, so it's unreadable. There are other things, but for example, on page 29, the topic committee of the whole, which talks about if we, if we want to move a conversation out of the room and keep visitors and press out, then this is how we would do this. I'm sorry. That's just not applicable in our situation. So there was also another one that was pretty obvious to me, which was when we're talking about if there's any conflicts of interest, it says bringing up past relationships and prior relationships. Actually, it's past and current and prior and ongoing relationships, so there's a significant miss there. So I don't know how we want to handle this, but I, there's several things that are wrong with the manual, and if we're going to do it, we might as well do it right.
Good, good points. And I would simply suggest a continuance and deferral of this item for the new council and allow the modifications to be made. And we have a lot of bright new minds on council coming up, and I think it's, would be a good exercise to have them finalize the ultimate draft of this particular document. So if that would be.
Well, I would so moved. Can we continue this?
Yeah, yeah. If that seems reasonable. Is that a motion you're comfortable with?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. [inaudible].
I heard a motion to continue. And a second, maybe we have a roll call, please.
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Councillor Bateen?
Yes.
Councillor Nosworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Bricky?
Absolutely. So with that, we'll move on to 6.7, and again, I'll ask Mayor Pro Tim Baxter to express your thoughts.
Thank you. So again, I sent these questions out to staff, and then I forwarded them to you guys today. The one thing that I think that's missing that really needs to be in this is about the applicable and appropriate CIP projects that the city is actually doing, Parks and Rec, Infrastructure Advisory Board, I don't know, Sewer Fund, that they should actually be reviewed by the Planning Commission and the Design Review Board. We've had a lot of concern by community members that some of the projects that have been done by the city haven't had to conform to the same standards, trees, for instance, sidewalk wits, that they would have to be done by a private person. So I would really like to include that in our capital improvement projects policy. Of course, it's not every project. It's the ones that are applicable to those kind of things.
I see a comment by councillor Nosworthy.
Thank you. Yes, I also had a few on that. And first of all, again, thank you for pulling this together. I know it's been a bit of work, but appreciate getting it done under this council. One of the comments was, under funding of asset maintenance, that they would assign, this is quote, "Assign enough resources to preserve the City of Durango's existing assets to the best of its ability before assigning resources to the building or acquiring new assets that also have operating and maintenance needs." And I know that we're undergoing the asset inventory this year, and that will inform going forward, but again, I wanted to raise the question, when will we start actually implementing this component of thinking about the maintenance before addressing new future programs? So I want to raise that question for staff. I also had a question about, again, we raised this last time, the movement of funds within the department by the city manager. And I cited an example of being able to come up with $700,000 for a project that was not approved or appropriated by the city council, so I did want to make certain that that was covered. And then finally, I do know that we have had a practice of quarterly review of the CIPs, and I would hope that that would continue as part of the process. So I don't know if we need, I'd like to see this being adopted, but I'd also like to see it to councillor Baxter's comment on the, on the advisory boards, I'd like to make certain we've addressed these issues.
Any comments?
Nosworthy, there was, I think I made a very similar question, which was that funds cannot be moved from one project to another without council approval. Kind of, that was your idea of how you would gather 700,000 together. And Devin did a great job responding to that and explaining how that is intended to be addressed in the, in the policy, and it's there.
Yeah, and I didn't see Devin's response yet today, so my apologies. I haven't seen the response to your questions that you submitted.
Yeah.
You know, I think we have a couple of questions that have posed that perhaps are ready for staff response, but I might poll councilors once again to see if this is an item that we should consider a deferral, or if it's important to the current council to finalize this long, this document that's been long and waiting. Councillor Nosworthy, these questions, when are we going to implement it, when we pass it, I guess?
And I would actually be willing to adopt with, you know, these questions addressed or as an addendum of some sort. But I'd like to hear Devin's comments, if that's possible.
That's what I was going to recommend, was that after we listen to Devin, that we look at the idea of putting the CIP projects reviewed by the Planning Commission, et cetera, into it and then approve it.
Excellent. So I guess we pass it on to Devin Schmidt. Do you have some thoughts you can share with us?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for reviewing this policy. We certainly tried to incorporate all of those areas from our previous study session. We did add under there, under project standards, that projects shall align with city standards as required by the Design Review Boards and Planning Commission. Staff would be happy to go back and flush that out further if that's council's desire. That's under the CIP project evaluation criteria. And then Mayor Pro Tim Baxter is absolutely correct. We did add in, under budget appropriations, that if a new appropriation is based on projects designated by city council through the adoption of the annual budget, but if new or new projects or additional resources are needed for that CIP, that that would come back to city council to follow and be in line with state of Colorado budget law. So those were some additions that we added. And then as far as maintenance, Cynthia and I have been working with Open Gov, and one of the items that we will be working to put forth is for every CIP project, you'll actually see the maintenance tied to that in the budget. And so with that, that's going to be put forth with Open Gov. We're working on the implementation of that now. You know, of course, absolutely would like to have the policy to follow it. And with that, I'll pause for a second. I think I covered all of the questions, and we can certainly flesh these out further if council so desires.
I'll add, Devin, that's helpful. And again, I didn't see your note today. I was pretty close to keeping up with emails, but not fully. pretty close to keeping up with emails, but not fully. I think maybe the only other thing would be maybe include an inclusion that council will review the progress on the CIPs on a quarterly basis. And I'd be most happy with that.
Perfect. And I do have that under CIP review. We just, we're working on getting caught up and are hoping to have those reports back to council as soon as we can.
With that information, do we have any further questions or are we prepared to make a motion or?
I'll make... I do want to say that I appreciate that it says that it will conform to the standards. But who makes that decision? And if it's supposed to conform to the standards of the Design Review Board and the Planning Commission, I think they have to make that decision. So if it's clear that it goes to them for that decision-making process, then I would be fine. So I would move that we accept the CIP project policy with the understanding that that change would be made, that they would, the Planning Commission, Design Review Board, et cetera, would need to review those when applicable.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. And I think we understand the motion. With that, we can have a roll call, please.
Counselor Noesworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Counselor Yussa?
Yes.
Mayor Brokeen?
Yes, thanks so much. And we'll move on to 9.1, which is quasi-educational hearings. We have one hearing this evening and that is a public hearing for the Mountain Trace 2 and Timber Trails preliminary development plan. And we start these with a staff report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Brokeen. Staff would actually like to ask for continuance of this item to the May 4th city council hearing. There were some important items that were omitted in error from the published agenda packet, which was essentially all of the documentation that was submitted to the Planning Commission prior to their review. So at this point, I can answer any questions about the continuance or you guys can make a motion to do that as well.
I think we should have a motion to officially continue from this count, especially considering it will be a new group of faces that evaluate this project. Unfortunately, but thanks for making us aware of the little snag and it's obviously not appropriate to take action on information that wasn't in the packet. So we will respect your request. And do I hear a motion for continuance?
I would move that we continue, I don't remember the number that it was, the Mountain Trace 2 and Timber Trails discussion to the May 4th meeting.
I think that's well stated. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Noesworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Yussa?
Yes.
Mayor Brokeen?
Yes, thanks so much. We're making up a little time here. So thanks for that, Dan. Quite honestly, again, thanks so much. With that, we'll move on to introduction of ordinances. We have one ordinance this evening, 10.1 on your agenda, which is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to grant short-term leases at the city-owned condos within Silver Peaks Condominium Development and declaring an effective date. And I think I'd ask the city manager to fill us in on this particular project.
Absolutely. So as we had the public hearing and the ordinance for this, the city does own two condos at the Silver Peaks Condominium. This will allow us the opportunity, or myself, to opportunity to use it as short-term leases during times where we have some staff transitions, specifically with some direct positions that we do have open currently. And we will revisit these condos as the budget process comes through for 2022 and talk a little bit about more on that of what the council perceives as the future of use of those condos.
Excellent. And city attorney, do we need to read the ordinance or do we just, we've got a copy of the ordinance in front of us, so which is 2021?
Yeah, it's, excuse me, it's ordinance 2021-9. I'd be happy to answer any questions if council has questions about the draft.
With that, any questions from council to city manager or attorney? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-9.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Counselor Yussa?
Yes.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Counselor Noesworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Brokeen?
Yes, thank you so much. With that, we'll move on to 11.2, which is a discussion on possible action concerning the City of Durango whistleblower policy. And I believe the, probably the city attorney is broke his staff.
I'm Dean.
I'm sorry.
11.1, or do I have an old agenda?
11.1.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You are absolutely right. 11.1, we're now in the administration portion, which is 11.1. It's not an ordinance, I apologize. 11.1, the discussion on possible action concerning approval of resolutions authorizing the donation and acquisition of Durango Mesa Park parcels and direct the city manager to execute a contract and close on the acquisition. So I'll leave it to our city manager to keep this one up.
Definitely. Thank you, Mayor and council. It's my pleasure to introduce Kathy Metz, the Parks and Recreation Director, who will handle this item.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Brokeen and members of council. As you recall, the council appropriated funds back in August of 2020 for the conveyance of land to the City of Durango. We currently have an acquisition and a donation from the Durango Mesa Park Foundation for consideration to the city council this evening. What we have is a purchase of 180 acres in Durango Mesa Park. And we do have a map. Mitchell, if you could post that for the council. And the amount of that acquisition would be $1.5 million. And then we also have a donation of 65 acres to the City of Durango. And so it's denoted here on the map. And so there would be a total of 245 acres that would be conveyed to the City of Durango from the Durango Mesa Park Foundation. And so one of the things that we wanted to point out that the foundation intends to use the money the whole city is using to, for the purchase of the property, that's parcel 1A for 180 acres for $1.5 million, to reinvest that money into Durango Mesa Park for infrastructure purposes. And so for your consideration this evening, we have the contract attached to the agenda documentation as well as authorizing two separate resolutions. One is for the donation and the second is for the purchase of the property and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract documents. So we're happy to answer any questions of the council regarding this transaction.
Thank you, Ms. Metz. And with that, I might remind the public that this is, this is not a public hearing. This is an administrative item. So we will have an opportunity for council to ask questions of staff. And so with that, is there any council questions of Kathy or the city manager in this regard?
I just want to say thank you, Kathy. And thank you so much to the Durango Mesa Park Foundation. This is a great addition to the Horse Gulch area, including Telegraph Trail going up over the top, Senate, the old Anastasi Trail. So I think this is a wonderful show of collaboration between the two groups and a good way to start our forward progress on the Durango Mesa Park area.
I would concur. Do we have any other thoughts or questions?
Just thank you for also for staff, for the movement forward. I look forward to, I'm glad that we've been able to get to this stage. And I look forward to the relationship, the pursuing relationship and working collaboratively together with Durango Mesa Park Foundation.
I think it could be said that the government doesn't move as fast as mountain bikers, but we are making motion, we are making movement on the great opportunity we have at Durango Mountain Park. So with that, I'd entertain a motion and understand that two separate actions. Is that...
Well, I'm looking at the recommendation down here. I'm assuming that's how I can make the motion.
Correct.
I would move that we approve the attached resolutions authorizing the donation and acquisition and direct the city manager to execute a contract and close on the acquisition.
I'll second.
I might just follow up and ask if that's the appropriate action or if we need to separate that into two actions.
I think we can do it in one motion. And just to be clear, the first resolution will be our 2021-18 and the second will be 2021-19.
Okay, if we conclude that in your motion, Kim, is that acceptable?
Yes.
These are both resolutions by a single motion. And then I heard a second. Was that Counselor Yussa?
Yep.
Excellent. It's been moved and seconded. Maybe we have a roll call, please. Ms. Phillips, can we have a...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I was muted. Counselor Yussa?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Counselor Noesworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Brokeen?
Yes, thank you so much. And we'll move to item 11.2 on our agenda, which is discussion on possible action concerning the City of Durango whistleblower policy. With that, is it Dirk or city attorney or city manager?
City attorney.
Your choice. Okay.
I'll take this one from here. The whistleblower policy was initially given to council some months ago. It was presented to council at its last regular meeting. Council suggested some amendments that were made. The highlights of those are the, under the reporting section, we've added a specific reference to a hotline to be created to accept and support reports from reporting individuals. The item also is amended to allow specifically for members of the public to make reports to the city manager. And there was also an important addition made that if a report makes allegations against the three appointees, the three council appointees, that be city manager, city attorney, or municipal judge, that those will be referred directly to city council for review. And then any report making allegations against a member of city council shall be referred to the Board of Ethics for review. Otherwise, the policy was as previously drafted and presented.
Thank you so much. And we have, we'll allow council to ask questions. And I see Counselor Noesworthy.
First of all, a huge thanks to the city attorney for staying with this and keeping it coming together. I just wondered if he needed to define a material violation. And later you talk about a material accounting matter. And maybe defining it is making it too specific in a policy. But for the non-legal public, they may not know what that constitutes.
Materiality is often referred to, auditors make those references. I certainly can take a stab at that, but I think the idea was that it would be significant enough to have an impact. But I mean, that's sort of the initial, I mean, layman's definition under an auditing term. But I think it would be material, meaning that it would be impactful to the budget. I think that, or impactful to the finances of the city.
Could that just be added, Dirk, as a definition at the end? So that it's, if somebody were unclear, they might have a better understanding of it?
What I might do is get the auditors to provide a more typical definition of materiality and we can certainly add a definition for that.
I'd be totally supportive of that and the policy with that added for clarity.
Other counselors have other comments or endorsement or opposition to the amendment that's been proposed to this ordinance?
No other comments and no opposition to defining materiality.
I can say materiality, so I like it. And that's a good point. And I think clarity on that would be great. And if there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion to, relative to this whistleblower policy.
I'll move to accept the whistleblower policy with the addition of a definition of materiality.
I'll second.
It moved and seconded. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Counselor Yussa?
Yes.
Counselor Noesworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Brokeen?
Yes, thank you so much. And with that, we'll move on to 11.3, which is discussion on possible action regarding Senate Bill 21062 regarding the letter of support that has been written. I might just summarize the history. We, two weeks ago, we did take action at the request of our police chief to author a letter of support to the legislature relative to supporting this bill. That letter was drafted. It was a four to one vote. Counselor Noesworthy opposed to the letter of support. And so the letter was sent with that notation to the legislature. And obviously, we've had significant testimony this evening. It's not a public hearing, but the testimony was received. I would like to add to the testimony just a reference to a significant email that we've all had from Ms. Carol Peir regarding opposition to our opposition of the bill. So in other words, she was in support of this bill as well as the other members that we heard this evening. So with that, we can open discussion or we can, we've got the following options. We've got, we can take action to accept the fact that it's already been sent and we took previous, we could, any actions even would be possibly overturning the results of a motion that we took two weeks ago in a letter that's already been distributed. Or we can continue this for another council. Or we can, I think most appropriately, it probably would be good to hear from our police chief to hear what his thoughts are and current considerations. So with that, if no other council has comments at this time, if it's appropriate, maybe it's time to hear from the chief.
I do. I do have a few comments. First of all, I do want to thank council for agreeing to receive new information and to reconsider this. I think that's appropriate and I thank you for that. I also want to recognize Mrs. June Thistle, the mother who spoke about her son's situation in jail. And I think that took a fair amount of courage and I appreciate her stepping forth on that, to speak on that. And I'd also like to make certain, there was a reference to a Loveland video. And if council hasn't seen it, I would encourage you to watch it because it is all over the internet. It references, it's a police video cam of Karen Gardner, a 73-year-old with dementia, who was, the police picked her up for walking away. And it's questionable whether she even realized she hadn't paid with $14 worth of material. And in eight seconds from the time she was approached, she was put to the ground and handcuffed and resulted in alleged dislocated shoulder, broken arm, and sprained wrist. And so, you know, I also want to acknowledge the comment from, I think it was Ms. Pontius, that, you know, maybe these aren't things that happen here, but they are things that happen with all too much frequency. So I think it's, there's one more name I'd like to also acknowledge in this process, and that's Sandra Bland, who was picked up for not having her turn signal on. And I think if you know that story, she ended up in jail. And it's questionable whether or not she committed suicide or there was something else that took place. So I want to recognize the comments. I also appreciate that, Dean, you're going to be turning it over to the police chief. But I will remind council that we talked last week about whether or not we should... council that we talked last week about whether or not we should invite the sheriff and representative along with the police officer and we all, with the police chief. And we decided that we would raise our questions independently. So I did want to remind us of that decision that was made last week. And again, I just, my own view is that if there's doubt in the appropriateness of this decision, then perhaps the best course is to remain neutral or to recognize that maybe a decision was taken too early and we need to think about it with a broader base of information, even beyond tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. And I might, the purpose, the reason this was placed on the agenda was not necessarily to have a broad discussion, but just to determine whether this council should, should in fact reconsider or, or take any, or modify the stance we took two weeks ago. So with that, or if we have a temperament to do that. So we, we can talk about whether this council wishes to consider, was really the reason this is placed on the agenda for this evening's consideration, not necessarily to have a full, full hearing in regard to that. So I see, Mayor Pro Tim Baxter, your hand's up.
So since the last meeting where we did the letter, we've heard a lot more information from people who were involved with writing the bill and from Sheriff Smith. And I just, I think that it's appropriate that Chief Brammer have the opportunity to speak to that. And I don't know if we want to do that tonight, or as you said, continue it to another time. But that's, I would find that highly appropriate to hear from Chief Brammer.
Well, I think as we all have, we've all heard new information, different information, certainly relative information. I think we were working on a good set of facts when we made this determination in support of our local law enforcement. So perhaps we could just have Chief Brammer give his update and his current thoughts on, on the topic and then we can decide our appropriate action. Chief?
Yeah?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for allowing me to continue this conversation. I'd also like to thank the panel members that provided community input this evening. Their perspectives were heard, they were great. And it is information that I was aware of prior to taking my opposition stance, which I continue. Do we need jail population reduction? Do we need it? Yes, absolutely, we do. I'm in complete agreement that this country is over incarcerated. Do we need bond reform? Yeah, we do. You know, that system of bond reform with cash bond goes back to England, you know, when we were still a colonial state in this country. And we do need to figure out some way to do that because it is disproportionate to certain portions of our population. And do we want to arrest the wrong people? No, we don't. Do we want to put the wrong people in jail? No, we don't want to do that. We want to make sure we're putting the appropriate and right people in jail and they're being held accountable for their actions on behalf of the victims that they've created. And that's the whole premise behind what we're looking at doing here. Is this bill the correct bill in order to do that? We don't think so. You know, I've spoken, you know, and I'm, you know, a member of the legislative committee for the Chiefs Association. And, you know, I represent a lot of the regional chiefs, sheriffs, marshals for this region. And I speak on their behalf in this, just like others have spoken on behalf of state representatives this evening. We do see an increase in crime. We're focusing on the data, we're looking at it. We know that the 2001, or 2021 quarter one stats are increasing over last year. We don't have enough data yet to know if that's going to increase, if it's going to continue, or if it's not. We want to make reform. We want to make sure that we're doing the right policies and everything else. You know, tonight, as the facts, you know, go, this bill is very restrictive. And that's the problem with it. It doesn't provide enough discretionary aspect for the officers to make determinations. You know, there's a lot of violent people out there. And violent people don't always commit violent crimes. And when we interact with them, there's a lot of times we know who they are and we know what they're about. And with that, we need to focus in on people. We need to do risk assessments and we need to do, look at histories. We need to look at queries and data that's out there that the street officer doesn't have initial information to. And when we know who those people are, we're able to take them into custody, all that risk assessment and that data and evidence-based selection is going to be in front of a judge. That's what we're asking. We're asking that this doesn't get left up to the officers on the street. It doesn't let, get left to a jailer to make that decision once somebody's been brought into custody. We want a judge to be able to take a look at this. There's a lot of successful models across this country. There's successful models in this state. There's programs in this state that are successful. This bill just, it's a new method of trying to do this. It's recreating something that already exists that we just have not adopted. And what goes on in Denver, what goes in Colorado Springs, what goes on in Grand Junction or Colorado or Pueblo, doesn't necessarily affect on things that has to do with Durango or our surrounding area here. We should be working locally on these issues with, in conjunction with all of our law enforcement partners. It's a system issue. It's not just, not just the police. It's not just the courts. It's not just the district attorney. It's not just the sheriff. It's not, not the jail system. It's a full system. And we need the judges' cooperation. We need treatment centers. I would love to be able to see the day where we're able to take that money that we spent on incarceration on an annual basis and provide that into treatment settings. So we don't have recidivism. So we can actually get people out of the system. And so it doesn't continue. Am I in support of these issues? I absolutely am, just not in this form. This is not the right time for the right thing to oppose. And that's why we're in opposition right now. It's because it's not the right time with the right bill for the right solution right now. And we need more data, we need more solutions, and we need to, we need to come to the table, we need to have further discussions. And it should actually be left up for the local jurisdictions to figure out how their communities and how their solutions are going to affect their problems with their communities for their citizenships.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate those comments. And so I think the decision for council is, you know, probably one of the following three, unless anybody would like to add another opportunity. And that was, number one, let the letter stand as written and delivered by this council during the past week. Number two, it would be to rescind the letter by this council, which I question the efficacy of a, of a letter that would be sent to the legislature now to say, oops, we changed our mind. I'm not opposed to that, however. And item three would be to accept additional information and allow the new council to, to take action based on any, what they might consider new information or additional information and, and understand the chief's concerns related to our rural mobile community. And so with that, just one second.
Let me make sure you have some information, Mayor.
Yeah, I'd like to see if any other counselors have anything to say first and relative to, and then we'll get back to the opportunity you've had previously.
I'm happy to go, Mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm in. First of all, I want to suggest that I really appreciate Chief Brammer's comments. And after looking at the, you know, new, not new information, but really abundance of information that we've received recently on this item, I was, I've been, I've been leaning towards the possibility of reconsidering and potentially taking a neutral stance at a minimum. I don't, the, I appreciate Chief Brammer's suggestion that we do definitely need to be looking at prison, social injustice reform. And I appreciate those also who have supported this bill and the ACL's position that it impacts our marginalized and vulnerable populations greatly, more so than because their inability to post bail. But I also hear what our chief is saying about the fact that our issues here locally are different. And this is where I'm feeling very torn. That is why I initially supported this because I hear and what we've understood from our chief of police is that, you know, there is a request that we have more time to actually understand what is driving the increase in crimes that we're seeing here locally. We've only really had one quarter of data to review these numbers and that's concerning. And according to a recent email from our chief that I really appreciated, he took the time to evaluate our, our crimes from this past quarter of this year to the previous year. And we have seen a 29% increase in total calls for service and an increase, and a 24% increase in property crime and a total increase in all crimes of 40%. So those trends are concerning. And I am concerned with the chief's notes that suggest that crimes that would be covered under this bill do include burglary, theft up to $100,000, theft from auto, motor vehicle theft, criminal trespass and others. So I find ourselves in a really difficult position here locally. We want to see social justice reform. We all have supported that here as a council. But we are primarily concerned about keeping our streets here locally in the city of Durango safe. And we're hearing from our chief that he, he thinks that this will hinder his ability to do that until he has more time to evaluate our data more clearly. So I'm feeling very conflicted. I'm just going to throw it out there. And I've been leaning towards taking a neutral, reconsidering my position to neutral as a result of that conflict that I'm feeling. But I'd love to hear from the other counselors.
Thank you, Melissa. Counselor Bettine?
Well, I'll reiterate what I said the last time we, we talked about this. And I think it's super unorthodox for us to be revisiting something that we took a four-one vote on with all of the information available to us at the time. And I'm sorry that we're put in that position because I think that was inappropriate. But here we are. So, you know, I want to repeat what I said last time, which is, we have rising crime rates in our community. Other communities are like us. The timing of this bill is not appropriate to that circumstance. We have a chief who I trust immensely and, and his staff and assistant chief, who I trust immensely and their organizations they belong to and their opinions, as well as the Colorado Municipal League, whose opinion I trust immensely. They have gone back and revisited this again with the amendments in the bill. And they've come back again against the bill for the reasons the chief illuminated here tonight. And, you know, all of those are the reasons that I feel extremely confident that we made the modification that was necessary in the last letter. It's already been sent. And to revisit that, I think is inappropriate at this time. I think we have already spoken on this issue and I appreciate all the folks that came and talked to us. And, and most of those folks, many of them at least, were, were part of the ACLU. They're the folks that wrote the bill. And so obviously, they're passionate about it. I understand that. And criminal justice reform is a major issue in our community. And I think the best thing about our police department is they have been at the forefront of those issues, in my view, since I've been involved in the city. And I appreciate that they have. Most recently, they have taken a different methodology to respond to issues that may have mental health-related situations in the community and created a task force that responds with mental health experts instead of police in the community. That's just one example among many. And so they're telling us, hey, we're trying to be at the forefront of criminal justice reform, but this isn't the right bill at the right time. I want to listen to them and appreciate their input. And I stand behind the letter that we wrote. I would like to make a motion that we move beyond this issue on the agenda and move to other business tonight.
We had a motion. Do we have a second?
May I make a statement a minute, please? About Robert's Rules of Order, please, if I may?
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
But a motion has been made, so I will ask for a second and then we'll have comment as I've been alerted that motion follows Robert's Rules of Order. So do I have a second on that? Motion that's been made? I would second that motion. And so with that, we'll open it up for further discussion. Yes, Barbara?
A couple of points. First of all, Robert's Rules of Order allow a body to rescind a motion, which is what we're following in this process, to consider rescinding a motion. So the discussion, I would say, is not unorthodox, but probably highly appropriate, given the fact that we have new information. So we're just following this discussion of whether or not we want to rescind this by an established parliamentary procedure. So I do want to make that clear. I also wanted to add, Mayor, to your comment about the efficacy. I will note that the Boulder City Council went from opposing to supporting this bill after they received more information. So, you know, I don't know whether we're to judge the efficacy, but if a council does decide to take a different stand, I think that does send a statement to the legislature, to the senators. So, you know, I appreciate your point, but I do want to point out that other councils have changed. To the chief, I also want to make certain that my concerns are in no way to not be appreciative or respectful of the work you do. I think that we're in a very complex issue. I also note that, you know, without going back and forth, there's been comment at the highest level that the police officers, not necessarily you, but the whole association, has persistently resisted participating in this process. So I don't know if that's here or there or true or not, but it's, it's a statement that's been made publicly about participation. So again, for me, this is a complicated issue. And I see the, I've heard from folks and I see it around it. My own position would be, as I said earlier, when in doubt, I see a neutral position here because I think there are very compelling cases on both sides of this issue. And I see the value in it. And I think a neutral position, in my own, my own view, is probably the stance I'm most comfortable with.
Thank you, Counselor Noesworthy. Yeah, difficult discussion. And it is highly unusual for the public to know that council does take a position. However, at the time, we felt that it was important to support a measure that was brought to us by staff and, and support the member organization, that being CML that we are a partner with and has, has established a position on this particular topic. So, Counselor, Mayor Pro Tim Baxter? Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I, you may or may not remember when we last discussed this. One of my biggest concerns was that we didn't seem to have alignment with organizations that would be affected by this bill. So I'm, I still don't hear that. But additionally, you know, I've thought a lot more about it and I've looked at the further information that came in. And for me, foundationally, when we're trying to solve a problem, we should write something that solves that problem, not by changing the way something else works that affects that problem. So I'm speaking to, like, the lack of ability for people to bond out of jail, for example. I'm not certain that just not putting someone in jail is the right answer to solving that issue of someone not being able to afford to get out of jail. I would rather see it addressed practically and holistically as to how do we solve those kind of problems. So there were a couple other issues like that that I felt were combined and joined in this bill, that this may not be the best answer for each one of them. And it may actually cause maybe some more issues than it solves. So I, I would not change my vote at this time.
Thank you, thank you. And I didn't want to stop you there, but it sounded like you that was a really accurate summary. And I find myself in a similar position. And, you know, I think as was stated by Counselor Yousaf and summarized by, the motion was made by Counselor Bettine. If there, there's an abundance of information, but I think I agree with Mayor Pro Tim Baxter in that one size does not fit all. And that was my, my disagreement with this particular bill and why I was supportive of a letter to say, go back and rethink this bill, which if anybody out there has read the letter that we supplied to the legislature, that's what it said. It was, it was not in disagreement with many, many aspects of this bill and the good things that are, to promote social justice and police reform within the bill. But it was clear that one size does not fit all. And combined with the... And, and combined with the, the statistics that, uh, Councilor Yusup talked about of the uptick of crime, specific crimes in Durango, Colorado, and, uh, that the chief has made us abundantly aware of. Uh, I, I thought that, uh, you know, I too was supportive of this, uh, uh, opposition to this bill as written at this time. So, um, for everybody out there to know, it wasn't in direct opposition to the bill in its totality. It was, uh, in, uh, opposition to this bill in its, uh, well, in its parts. And, uh, all the parts don't come together in the format that's best for Durango, in my opinion. So with that, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, and Chris, might I have you to simply summarize what that motion was? Uh, it was a motion to, uh, to, uh, not consider re, uh, rescinding our order, it was just the, to not have further discussion, uh, which is, I believe, the substance of your motion. Uh, Chris, you're on mute.
I'm muted.
My motion was to, uh, move past this issue on the agenda without reconsidering the letter that was sent to the legislature.
Thank you. And it was seconded. Um, I might, I might say that if, um, if we were to act on this motion, which we will in a long moment, uh, it doesn't preclude the option for further, another council to, uh, pick up this item with more information and, uh, take, taken a different opinion with a lot further, uh, community input perhaps and, uh, additional information should that council decide to move forward with this, uh, continued deliberation about this particular topic. Um, and I would encourage that. So with that, uh, maybe we have a roll call, please?
I just have one question, Mayor.
Sure.
Um, and just one more comment. Um, first of all, I wanted to suggest to our community that I really appreciate our, um, chief's activism in, um, in, in really leading the way for local reform with our co-response teams and our panel of system, you know, uh, citizens that review, um, complaints. I really appreciate his efforts on that. Also his active and involved participation with our community, um, and his responsiveness and his communications with our community, um, requesting information, um, and, um, really actively trying to work with our community. I have so much respect for it. Um, but, you know, in my situation, and I really also very much appreciate the position of council and, um, your desire to move forward with, uh, and oppose. I guess my request is if I desire myself personally to remain neutral in this situation, um, kind of how, uh, we might deal with that. Um, I would, at a minimum, want to be kind of on the record that I'd like to be noted as a neutral stance, uh, changing my position to a neutral stance based on this information, um, uh, which means clearly I'm not supporting or opposing. I recognize that our chief wants more time to evaluate the data. I respect that. Um, but I'm also hearing this desire for reform and, 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 and so I'm, I'm feeling caught in the middle. So I'm wondering what I will do in this situation. Clearly there'll still be majority council support to move forward opposing this. I understand and appreciate that, um, but I might prefer to be on the record, um, in oppose, in, in desiring a neutral stance.
I also am on the record again for desiring a neutral stance and I will add that I question the appropriateness of, of going forward in opposition, um, on this bill. That's part of why I also want to remain neutral.
Very good. Well, uh, we have a motion that's been seconded and then we have a roll call, please.
Councilor Batine?
Yes.
Councilor Nozworthy?
No.
Councilor Yusup?
No.
Mayor Protem Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Brooking?
Yes.
So with that, uh, we will move on to, uh, item 12 of our agenda and, um, I might summarize what the, you know, for those of you that might still be with us, uh, listening in that the, you know, the purpose of that vote was to, uh, not rescind, but to, uh, allow a new council to pick it up and have further conversation as was stated by, uh, a number of our counselors. So, uh, with that, we will move on to-
Excuse me, Dean, but the letter still stands with the council, so-
That is correct.
So you're, are you saying that a new council could take away your opinion? I, I just want to be clear to the public, the new council has the potential-
We, we voted to move on, um, so we will move on and we will move to council reports and actions and so, but-
Dean, actually you had, you moved an agenda item, I believe, from the second from the agenda into, it was 18.1?
18.1, which is, uh, uh, discussion of possible action concerning resolution authorizing additional appropriations to the Capital Projects Fund, 2015 half-cent sales tax fund, set fund and the Conservation Trust Fund, the sewer fund for replacement of dislocated Santa Rita Park amenities. That's a mouthful to say, this is, uh, we're about to talk about the, uh, the park proposal at Santa Rita Park. Uh, with that, we have a staff report, please, uh, um, either Jared and/or Kathy Metz.
Scott Chisholm. Uh, it's either Jared Biggs, Scott Chisholm or both. Our Assistant Utilities Director, Jared Biggs and Scott Chisholm are, uh, Parks and Recreation Capital Improvement Program Manager. I believe that I get that right, Scott? I hope so. Uh, will be presenting this project.
I'll let Scott lead there.
Right. Thanks for that. Everyone, thank you, uh, Mayor Brooking and, and, uh, Mayor Protem Baxter. Um, wanted to jump in if, uh, Mitchell, if you could bring up the site plan for Santa Rita Park, uh, that we can speak to. Thank you. So we have a site plan here on the, on your screen. It's illustrated in Santa Rita Park improvements in 2021. Uh, in 2020, the first component of the park restoration, which was the turf field there in the upper part of the diagram, was completed. And in 2021, uh, the final component of the park restoration, uh, includes two lit sand volleyball courts down kind of in the center of the, the, the image there, one lit basketball court, more on the right side, and one picnic pavilion, uh, which were all displaced as part of the development of the Water Reclamation Facility Administration Building. Uh, park landscape, parking and sidewalk improvements are also included as part of the, the overall, uh, scope there at the park. We recognize that there have been some questions about the park amenities as they've been proposed, uh, including some suggestions for pickleball courts. Uh, pickleball courts were in fact considered during a lengthy design process for Santa Rita Park, uh, following that process of, of public engagement and, and engagement with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, um, to review the, uh, actually Kundav Park and the Three Springs Community Park, uh, were identified as, as locations for, for pickleball courts for the community. The city has initiated, uh, planning and design for eight, uh, lit pickleball courts at, uh, at Three Springs with our 2021 appropriations. And we have four unlit pickleball courts that we have, uh, designed for Kundav Park, uh, when that project, uh, has construction, uh, appropriations. Um, the, the comprehensive scope as, as we presented it, um, is funded from both utilities and Parks and Recreation funding sources. Uh, the 2021 appropriated utilities funding, uh, for the displaced park communities at Santa Rita Park is, is being utilized as a result of the impacts from the administration building development, um, not unlike, uh, the $176,550 that, uh, for the new sewer line, uh, realignment and infrastructure that was paid as part of the, from the Parks and Recreation Fund, um, completed that as part of the Amistri-Rutral North, uh, project a couple of years ago. The network was completed. Uh, we have a, kind of, overall, we've got, um, $850,000 currently appropriated for, uh, this project. We've proposed a combined 610,000 of supplemental appropriations between the sewer fund and the Conservation Trust Fund, um, that we're, uh, we're requesting, uh, for the, the comprehensive project scope, uh, this year in 2021. And we've identified those project costs in the, the agenda documentation. $150,000 of that, um, supplemental appropriation request is, is for parking lot asphalt replacement. Um, that work was bid as a, what's called an added alternate, um, which is basically value-added work. Um, the asphalt pavement at Santa Rita Park is, is definitely at its end of life, um, has been so for a while. Um, the construction activities, it's further degraded, um, the condition of, of that asphalt pavement. You know, the, the continued patchwork, um, if, if any of you have been down to Santa Rita Park lately, on the, actually on the south side where the basketball court is proposed to, to be located, um, we have significant portions of, of the pavement that are completely disintegrated. Um, and so, you know, we have the, um, we've identified the opportunity to, to really try to long-term address that, um, as opposed to trying to patchwork this, you know, over continued, um, annual expenditures, which ultimately cost the city more money, um, in the long term. Um, $460,000 of the supplemental appropriation requests is for completion, of course, of the, of the primary park restoration, uh, of those lit, uh, sand volleyball courts and the basketball court and the, and the picnic pavilion. Um, the reason, the kind of the contributing factors as to why that cost is such that it is, is really kind of three primary aspects. You know, the first is, is kind of our current, um, construction market. And right now our general contractors in the area are, are busy, um, which resulted in, you know, the city only received two construction bids for the project, um, both of which were, were relatively high, you know, in comparison to what we had budgeted. Um, things like, right now, materials like concrete and steel and PVC and lumber have all ridden, risen since we had prepared those, those engineers' estimates back in September, kind of the, the third quarter last year for our budgeting exercises. Um, COVID-19 obviously is, is absolutely affected, um, construction markets, uh, and, and materials, uh, supplies, uh, and pricing. And we're definitely seeing that. We know that, that things like steel and lumber prices are, uh, that are quoted by suppliers are, are only being held for days. And that volatility or that uncertainty is definitely being reflected in our, um, in the pricing that we've been receiving from, from contractors. You know, it's not just this project, but we've certainly been seeing that in, in some of the other projects that we've been, uh, bidding, uh, recently for the city. Um, another, uh, kind of contributing factor is, you know, we did have, uh, some differences in, in material costs, uh, between when we estimated and when we bid. Um, the, the most significant example of that was the sand cost for the volleyball courts. Um, you know, we had a, a cost that, that we, uh, believed to be, um, reasonable in our, uh, estimating, uh, efforts. And, you know, following that, that effort, as we got, um, further along in our construction documentation process and our specification process, which was completed in December of last year, so after our kind of budgeting exercise, uh, and also working with our kind of local, um, volleyball community and, and also working with volleyball USA, uh, we actually identified a, a true source of, of appropriate sand, uh, that was not going to be a, an issue with our sand volleyball players. Um, and that, the cost for that sand is, is significantly higher, uh, than what we had estimated. So, um, I mean, that, that in itself was a, was a $92,000 difference. So that's, that's a major part of, of, of why we have some, some differences here. Other examples, you know, I kind of alluded to, uh, things like PVC, uh, you know, the storms down in Texas over this winter absolutely has had an effect on, uh, PVC costs and, and, you know, those materials are used in this project through irrigation systems and through our lighting systems. And it just so happens that a lot of, of resin that sort of ultimately feeds the, the US market, um, is, is created in, in Texas. And so Mother Nature essentially has, has had an effect on, on how we're trying to do projects here in Durango. Um, and then lastly, you know, we did identify, uh, an appropriation at the staff level, uh, greater than the, the $300,000 that is currently appropriated. Um, it, it should be larger. Um, we recognize that that was, uh, going to be necessary, uh, during that budgeting process and, and unfortunately that, uh, that revision, um, did not fully get materialized in our adopted, in our 2021 adopted budget. So, um, that's another reason why we're, we're here in front of you this evening. Um, you know, we recognize staff as a, you know, any request for supplemental, um, appropriation is, is a, is a significant request to city council. Um, and all of our, our Parks and Recreation projects, uh, are, are, that may require additional funding or, or reviewed with, uh, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and brought to city council for, for consideration for supplemental funding, which is exactly what's happening right now. Um, you know, we've, we've worked with the, the low bidder to, uh, identify a little over 200 and about $202,000 in, in cost reduction, um, from their, their initial bid. Uh, you know, done that through a number of different, um, approaches, uh, one of which is to, uh, accept more work that would be done, um, essentially in-house by our, our, by the city, uh, in the form of, of kind of owner-supplied, owner-installed, um, equipment, um, and other actions that, that the city could, could essentially self-perform and ultimately save, um, kind of the markup and the, and the contractor fees that would associate if, if that kind of work was contracted. Um, the number of other techniques to, to kind of reach that $202,000, uh, overall savings that we've gotten to. Um, I wanted to, to kind of point out that in 2020, uh, that the, the Parks Recreation Department, we had 20 capital improvement projects and within an appropriated budget of $10,383,123. And all of those projects were completed within the appropriated funds. So I think in the interest of time, uh, with me, like, like Jose had mentioned, we have Kathy Metz as well as Jared Biggs available to answer questions and I would love to, to open it up to council to, um, for, for that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Kathy, did you want to add comments at this point or entertain questions?
I think that it would be best served if we answered questions of the council and addressed those things that you're most interested in.
Surely. Um, and, uh, so let's do a round of questions, uh, in any particular order. Mayor Protem Baxter, do you have any thoughts or questions at this time or of staff?
Thank you, Dean. Um, so I absolutely support, um, redoing Santa Rita Park and putting the, putting amenities back in so that that is complete. I ha, I'm challenged in some ways by the conversation though, because we're looking at a significant amount of money increase, uh, a total of 1.46 million for this project. And so there's a couple of things that I, I don't quite understand. For example, the quality of the sand is a choice that the Parks and Rec plan is making. So I don't quite know why, like sewer funds should help pay for that. I, I'm just confused by a little bit of that. Um, and you also mentioned the pickleball courts. That was something I brought up because we've had a huge, uh, surge in interest in pickleball since, uh, the sewer treatment plant was originally agreed to and the, and the park got changed and demolished. And it kind of seems to me like we have, and thank you, uh, Councilor Yusup for asking this question about how many basketball courts do we have in town? I think that was really appropriate. Um, when we really don't have any pickleball courts, but we have some basketball courts now, um, it seems like this is a, a section of our community that, that could use, uh, some attention, uh, more particularly seniors and, you know, put another basketball court out at Three Springs and possibly there already is one on the plan. But, um, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not convinced that the basketball court is the best option here. Um, I also had some questions for Jared about, uh, and I think you know that because I sent those questions out to staff, um, about the funds that were used to build the sewer treatment plant, what the contingencies were left, um, the same thing with the, um, administration building, the contingencies that were left. Um, but I also wanted to bring up a question that I, that John Simpson mentioned, which I appreciate. Um, the form of the construction of the restrooms in the administration building were designed to, the placement of them and how you access them were designed to be used by people using the Animus River Trail in, um, Santa Rita Park, that they're designed to be essentially able to be shut off from the administration building so that other users can use them without getting access to the administration building. And I, and that may have been done at a, at a cost to the sewer funds and water funds because they both paid for that building, if I understand correctly. Um, and whether or not Parks and Rec funds, um, helped with that since it's a direct benefit because there are no longer restrooms at the, in the park and as well suffice as the restroom. So I'm just not certain where the balance is coming out here and I would like to know whether or not Parks and Rec took that into account and whether or not they have paid for part of the cost of how the administration- for part of the cost of how the administration restrooms were taken care of.
Yes, Mayor Protem Baxter, if I could just kind of start that off, and I'll hand it off to Kathy. We received a lot of, a lot of questions from the council on this item, and one of them was about the funding in regards to this item. And after speaking with staff, we understand, I understand why the recommendation was made for the sewer, sewer fund to pay for this extra portion of it. And I'll have Kathy kind of talk a little bit about that history. Obviously, I wasn't here when some of these decisions and thoughts were being made, so we're trying to make sure that we honor it. It's a good time on this track we're here with the council to kind of see if that's where it wants to go. What I will also say is that if the sewer fund is not a, an area of funds that they would like to use, there are other funding sources that we could use, that we could probably take advantage of, if that is the will of the council. But this is the, this recommendation was made based on the history of this project and kind of what was supposed to be the agreement with this park project. But there are other options available for funding that we could look at and using to utilize to finish this project, if that's something that the will of the council would take a look at or would want. But I'll pass over to Kathy to talk a little bit about that history of why we were looking at the sewer fund and how that came into place. So Kathy, if you wouldn't mind.
One other question to add, sorry, I missed it, which is, how come it didn't go through the Infrastructure Advisory Board for a conversation?
Okay, so Jared has an answer to that question, so start with Kathy and then go to Jared if that works for the council.
So I hope I captured all of your questions, Mayor Protem Baxter, but if I didn't, if I'm not answering something, please remind me. And so I think one of the questions you raised was about the restrooms. And so there were separated restrooms in Santa Rita Park that were removed by the construction of the administration building, along with sand volleyball, the basketball courts and picnic pavilion. So restrooms were removed from the park during the construction project. And so the agreement that we came to with the former city manager, former utilities director, is that the restrooms would be incorporated into the building and accessible to park users. And the good thing about that is it's just easier to have a year-round restroom, very popular place for a restroom facility in the park system. And so that was a great win-win for the park and the park users. And so that was one hundred percent funded by the utilities funds because they were replacing amenity that was removed. And so originally, the concept here was that the utilities division or department at the time would pay one hundred percent of the cost of the redevelopment of Santa Rita Park. And over time, people changed, people left, and that agreement and commitment was a staff verbal commitment and a verbal commitment with the city council and our community. And so we have worked out an arrangement now that it's a partnership. Parks and Recreation is paid for some of these improvements, and utilities is paying for some of these improvements. And where we came up with the, what does utilities pay for is they're really paying for everything that they removed from the park that was previously there. And quite honestly, we wouldn't be redeveloping this park had not the disruption occurred because of the construction of the water regeneration facility and the utilities administration building. And so that's how the restrooms got managed in the process. And in terms of the sand, the sand i- is pretty critical. You know, we have photographs and lots of documentation of the condition of the sand that was in the old sand volleyball courts where people actually were injured and because of the roughness and the coarseness of the sand. So the sand does matter for safe play, and so we're just meeting current standards. And so things changed a lot since the nineteen eighties when those courts were originally built. And so we're just meeting current standards for what's applicable in building a sand volleyball court now. And so it's not a premier sand, but it is a sand that isn't going to injure the players using the facility. And so that's a cost of the project, and so the thinking that staff has is that that should be paid for by the utilities funding. And then in terms of pickleball courts, you know, you're right that there is so much passion in our community about pickleball, but I would tell you that the Santa Rita basketball courts were the highest-used amenity in Santa Rita Park before those courts were demolished at night. There are no other lit basketball courts in Durango. All of the lit basketball courts that are outs, all of the basketball courts that are outside, whether it be the one that the city has at Folsom Park or on the nine R and school properties, of course, those aren't available unless the school is not in session to the public. Those are not lit for public use. And there's a lot of people that enjoy playing basketball, particularly in the heat of the day in the summer, outdoors under the lights, and they were very, very popular. And so that's why the board actually made lots of discussion around pickleball. But one thing I would like to add, that I think it's important for the council, and I have confirmed this with the Southwest Colorado Pickleball Association, in our gymnasium at the recreation center, we have courts that are lined for pickleball and basketball, and we accommodate both of those activities indoors all the time at the rec center. And so what I would suggest to the council is that we can easily line these outdoor basketball courts and just simply put a different color down to delineate the pickleball lines, and the pickleball players say they're happy with that solution and they do not need offense. And so that is an interim situation that will give them those outdoor courts in Durango to make them happy, and it'll allow us to go forward with the type of facility that they would really like to bring in tournament play at Three Springs Community Park.
Great, Kathy. Thank you for that collaboration and that explanation. That was not information that, at least I as a council member, had been made a prize of before, so thank you.
I think that, good question. Kathy, thank you for that summary, that historical summary and so.
May I ask Kathy a question about lighting?
Certainly. Councilor Noesworthy.
Yeah, I just wondered, Kathy, you know, I know how popular basketball can be to so many people, so given that we have so many outdoor courts that are not lit, has there been any consideration to lighting them on a temporary basis, at least in the summertime? What that would cost, I'm sure it would improve safety for everyone around and increase usage. So I'm curious if that's been considered, and if not, when would it be considered?
We are, we certainly know, Councilor Noesworthy, that the lighting is a very sensitive issue in Durango. When we have lit outdoor facilities, let me give you some examples. The skate park in Schneider Park, as well as the, when we built the Fort Lewis College complex for tennis and softball, and the soccer field complex, a lot of community conversation about lighting those fields. And so I have had numerous conversations with our neighbors to Folsom Park, with the Folsom neighbors, and they are not interested in a lit facility there because of the impact, because it's very close to their private residence. In terms of the school district property, I mean, we do make improvements on the school district property. We built Riverview Sports Complex and paid for that, and we maintain that currently. And I think we have a great partnership with School District Nine R, but that would take some time to decide if those courts should be lit and if that's appropriate to expend city dollars. We would have to get a long-term lease agreement to make sure that those assets stayed available to the community to protect that investment of the city. And so in terms of the one facility that we have that's a current basketball court, I don't believe the neighbors would be supportive of a lit basketball court at Folsom Park. And that's the joy of Santa Rita Park. There are residents, but it's across the highway, and we aren't impacting with either noise, which is also a consideration, or lighting an adjacent residential neighborhood.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
If I may, I mean, I think that's a great opportunity, council, and Kathy for, you know, bringing you up as a partnership opportunity with the school district to partner of maybe providing those lights and offering an opportunity for those others to have different areas to where they can play outdoor basketball. So point well taken and something I think that staff can keep in mind in our meetings with the school district in ways that we can strengthen our partnership that may be able to booster the amenities that we have.
Thank you so much. And other councilors, Chris, do you have any comments on this particular item?
Mayor, I do think Jared had to follow up to finish up.
That's right, yeah, Jared.
I'm all right, kind of sitting in the back, but I think there were three items that Mayor Protem Baxter brought up that I wanted to make sure I addressed. One was the, the, providing the information to the Infrastructure Advisory Board. The Infrastructure Advisory Board originally took up this project with the sand volleyball courts in their August meeting last year, August third, when we presented all CIP projects to them. At that point in time, we had presented to them the three hundred thousand dollar value that exists in the budget today. They reconsidered that again in October, and that was when we had actually received those supplemental project estimates that Scott had mentioned. And in that presentation to the Infrastructure Advisory Board, we did give them that five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or I think five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar range. So that was one of the reasons that the budget is so significantly different, is because we then did not get that number into the budget documents that you all considered and approved at the end of the year. So that increased our supplemental request off the bat. And then that was actually an item I discussed with the Infrastructure Advisory Board on the fifth of this month during staff updates. I had explained to everybody that, you know, we would be coming, among other capital improvement project updates, that we would be coming to council with a supplemental request. I explained that the original three hundred thousand was in the budget and that we would be coming with a request of four hundred and fifty-five or four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And so to that point, I did discuss, asked for questions and didn't really receive any feedback. So that was that item. The other question that Mayor Protem Baxter, I think you had, was about plant costs and contingencies. So the overall plant costs ended up being about sixty-one point eight million dollars, and that, the original appropriations for that project was sixty-four point five. Those dollars either reverted back to the fund balance at this point in time, or we didn't draw them down in loan, from our loan. So we just didn't issue the loan. And the same with the admin building. That total cost today sits at nine point nine, nearly ten million dollars. We have four hundred thousand or four hundred forty thousand remaining, and that is an active project that is ongoing. We have predominantly some landscaping and a few doors and cameras remaining.
What was the original budget for that building?
The original budget, I think the total dollar value was ten, ten million three hundred thousand, I believe. But I can get you those, you know, actual numbers in an email for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Noesworthy.
Yeah, a couple of things, Jared, thank you. This has been a long process here, and the dollar number is changing. You know, I think it's one thing to present it as a report, and it's another thing to actively seek feedback from the advisory board. So it doesn't sound as though feedback was actually sought, it was just, this is something that's happening. And I guess from a process point of view, when I look at the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, they actually become quite active and endorse something. And I'm really searching and struggling with, is it an appropriate use for this additional money to come from the ratepayers of our sewer fund, water and sewer fund, or however it's going to become from the sewer? And particularly, it doesn't sound as though the advisory board has taken a stand on it. To not ask questions is not the same as to actually say they support this. So I want to make that note, that it wasn't quite clear that there was a, support was being sought. So that's one point. I also wanted to get for my own clarification, you know, the status of the park prior to the building of the water treatment plant was not a brand-new park, correct? It was a much-used park facility, much-loved. And so again, I raised the question of, with all these additional charges and for a variety of reasons, I question the appropriateness of using ratepayer money, particularly when there's funding available from other sources. And I'm concerned, you know, I hear from people who are, well, you know, go to the rec center to take their showers, so they're not charged for funding for sewer, water and sewer, or, you know, don't water their lawns due to costs. And so I have real concerns with putting this on the ratepayers fee, you know, taking it out of their, what they've paid into, rather than looking at it from another source. I'm also, and again, also that it's a much, much vastly improved park than what was originally there when we went through this, and that's probably a good thing for the community. I'm also, Kathy, very thankful for your possibility of working on the pickleball. I think that's great, and I also would love to look at whether or not it makes sense to keep parks open. I had one more question, and that was in regard to, it was a question I think Mr. Simpson also raised, and it may be for Kathy and Jared. Does Parks and Rec pay for the water used in this park as well? I just want to clarify that point if we could. Thank you.
Yes, we do. We are, we are charged for every drop of water that we put down in the park system at the rate that utilities charges us. And so, yes, Santa Rita Park is a very high-use athletic facility, a lot of soccer, as you know, you can see the kids playing soccer there. And so it is a high-use facility, and we do pay for the water at Santa Rita Park.
Thank you.
Moving on, let's see, I forgot who we got a little out of order there with Councilor Noesworthy, but I want to make sure all councilors have the ability to weigh in. I think Melissa, do you have any other comments before we can close?
No other comments for me. I was very curious about the basketball and pickleball, but Kathy answered those for me, so I feel like my, I have no more questions. Thank you.
Well, then I'll just weigh in. You know, this is, this is a long history, you know, and why it's very, very important that this council take action instead of picking up this item in thirty or forty minutes from now with fresh new bases, as talented as they might be. This was a commitment by the former city council prior to the bond issue that paid for the sixty-eight million dollar wastewater treatment facility. And as designs rolled out and we looked at these opportunities, it became clear that there needed, while the sewer treatment plant wasn't going to occupy the space of the sand volleyball fields and the basketball court, they needed additional construction area to do their staging areas and that kind of thing. And so when that information came, became public, we had a significant outcry amongst the, first the basketball people, and then, oh my God, it's the sand volleyball people. And we filled the city council chambers a couple of times with passionate people about those existing amenities in our park. So this is not a new thing or an enhancement of anything. This is just a fulfillment of a commitment that is made by city council. And I'll read a little thing by the mayor at that time, Christina Rinderly, who makes the point that Kathy just told us, this was a fulfillment of a commitment that has no other causal factor than we built the sewer treatment on top of these people and took away that amenity. All we're doing today, trying to replace that amenity that was taken away during the construction period. That said, it's as simple as, he would take it away, pay us to put it back. That's the sewer fund. And with the additional income from the resources that Kathy's put together to supplement the sewer, the overage, and so I think it's totally appropriate, and it'd be almost egregious to look for other funding other than the sewer fund to pay for these improvements, because that's who caused this. We would still have these basketball courts and these sand volleyball courts, but for the sewer plant. So there's no other causal factor and no other responsibility than that fund to make this replacement, period, in my mind. And so it's as simple as that. I think to question or to look at other opportunities for funding at this point... I think to question or to look at other opportunities for funding at this point would be taking away from some other taxpayer-funded use for public funds than the person who, the element, I'd call it, the causal factor, which was the sewer treatment plant, not a person. It's the, to pay for this replacement. This is just a replacement. And in fact, it costs more than it would have cost last summer. It's going to cost more in 30 days when the bids go bad for this that we have now, have in hand right now to award this contract. It'll cost more than 30 days if action is not taken tonight. So I, you know, to continue to study this and look for other alternative funds is pretty egregious, I think, to even contemplate at this point in time. So I can read this letter we all received by email, but from Christina Rinderly, mayor at that point in time, that part of the community's approval of this overall project was the city's commitment to rebuild Santa Rita's park soccer field and replace the basketball and volleyball courts. As these groups in the community were very vocal about the importance of these amenities, which are in keeping with the city's strategic plan goals. We all know construction costs are on the rise nationwide and appreciate city working with the utilities and parks departments, as well as the Conservation Trust Fund, which provide a solution as presented for the increase in cost to create these promised amenities for our community. So I think that's why I'm really reluctant to pass this on to a future council. I think it's a commitment was made by people on our current council, including myself and former councils. And it's just a fulfillment of that commitment. So any further discussion?
Mayor, I just missed my turn on it. Mind if I weigh in real quickly?
You bet, Chris.
Yeah, I just wanted, one of the things I don't think has come up is that the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, in looking at the opportunities here to rebuild this park, they looked at numerous plans. And every one of those plans was far more expensive than this one. They came to a conclusion that the principle of replacing the amenities that were promised by the council in doing this project was the primary emphasis and to save funds for other future projects, but to return the park to the status that it was in and return the amenities to the status it was in. So that was, that was their emphasis and it was, you know, a fairly unanimous decision to my recollection that they approved this particular plan. So I wanted to offer that to you. I do agree with everything that the mayor just said. I mean, this was a commitment that the council made to the community about replacing these amenities. And the only reason they had to make that commitment is there was a utility going in that was necessary for the community that was non-optional to install. And so the utility department is in the natural bearer of some of the responsibility to make that right and put it back together and put it back in order. That we've heard it a bunch of times, but, you know, the mayor and I are both in the, in the real estate industry and those costs are real. We see the new costs of construction going up every time we get a new bid right now. And so I totally agree with him. We need to take action now. And this bid is open only tonight, from what I understand. They will move on from it and we'll have to get a new bid. So let's, let's make this decision, move on, get this park back and up in order. The people who didn't get to go there for a couple of years and enjoy that amenity that they've been enjoying would sure like us to get it back in order.
Thank you for comments. Any further comments or I would adjourn the motion?
Mayor, or the motion if you like.
Sure.
Approve the attached resolution authorizing the supplemental appropriations to the Water Capital Projects Fund and the Parks Capital Projects Fund for the purposes of completing park improvements at Santa Rita Park.
Is this the Water Capital Fund or the Sewer Capital Fund?
That was my typo. I stole from an old water, an old water agenda item.
My correction, Sewer Capital Fund. I read it, but it was the wrong word. So my correction, it is from the Sewer Capital Fund.
Thanks to all for that critical correction. It's been moved. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Youssef. It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion?
Yes, please. Thank you. I'd like to go on record as, first of all, thanking everyone for their effort in this. And I support the reconstruction of the parks at Santa Rita and recognize that there are costs. But I, my vote will be indicative of the fact that I do not believe it is appropriate to ask the ratepayers to pick up these additional costs. I have deep concerns about inequities and inability to pay those rates, and I'm concerned about that. So I support that park. I am not supportive of using sewer funding to fund that. I would welcome, if later, a discussion of appropriate other uses of funding to make this happen. I would welcome that discussion.
Duly noted. I would suggest it's, I wouldn't want to ruin another project in this, for the city, that, I don't know who else more appropriately would be tagged to make this, to fund this particular effort. So I'm a believer in cause and effect. With that, any other items? Any further discussion or we can have a roll call, please?
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Batine?
Yes.
Counselor Nowsworthy?
Obstain.
Mayor Proton Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Broke?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. And we will move on to item 12 in our agenda, Council Reports and Actions. And I might start, and I'll try to keep this as briefly as possible. I had two items when the Airport Commission met. Big, big news for public interest is that we do have now the commitment from Frontier Airlines to join the rank subservice to Durango Airport. That'll be starting June 4th. And so we now have two new carriers. Delta is going to bring its service to Salt Lake City, direct flights, and in all points beyond there. And Frontier opens up a highly competitive market to a number of areas. And I just locally checked to see what my flight, my next flight to Denver would be, and it's under $200 on Frontier. So that's a substantial change and I think an opportunity, not only in scheduling, but fares that will be available to citizens in Durango. That was the big news, that was the good news. The bad news is the commission and staff at the airport is trying to figure out what the impacts of that many new passengers incoming and planning and embarking from Durango. And so that's caused us to really take a hard look at the new master plan and in what thing, how our facility can really accommodate that many new carriers. We do have stations for them at the ticket encounter, and we have offices for them, but the pinch points will clearly become aware, will become aware of pretty quickly in our seating areas or at the boarding gates. So we, staff has really taken a hard look at that with the architects and looking at temporary opportunities that we can, including temporary bistros outside, outside our tent and so forth, to look at creative ways that we can accommodate more people in the interim until we are able to implement our full-on master plan and restart reconstructing the terminal, which is scheduled for 2024. So the good news is we got lots of new flights. The bad news is it'll be a little more crowded out there until we can make the improvements to accommodate them. And, but in general, for the community, it's a plus. But that, the other, the other thing I was able to do was provide some testimony to the Senate, the Colorado Senate Agricultural Committee on Thursday in support of the House Bill 211008, which is the fourth forest health project financing bill. And about 30 minutes after I gave testimony, they didn't back, take action and pass that bill. So we have that to look forward to in general. You know, I think our community is supportive of anything that's going to support mitigation of fires in the Wui, the wildland, wildland urban, wildland urban interface and protect our community from further forest fires. So with that, open it up to other counselors that have council reports and actions.
Mayor, I'm going to spare you mine because I'll be doing it at the next council meeting.
Other counselors? Reports and actions, you're going to save yours as well. Mayor Proton Baxter and Counselor Nowsworthy. Excellent. With that, Chris, do you have any thoughts or?
No, I think we can move on to the next section. I have some thoughts there maybe.
Okay, well, the, and so I'm going to need some advice, certification of the results. You know, I'm trying to figure out when we leave and when, when we're excused. As, so I might take some advice on that, whether we, I've got a few parting comments and so I was anticipating providing them at this point, at this juncture in a meeting, and then followed by the certification of the results and then an administration of the oaths. But if it's appropriate for the old council to leave after council reports and actions and then the new council take over during item 13 on the agenda? Or if the old council sticks around till, till the election results are certified? I might ask city attorney, what do you think about that?
I don't have an opinion on that. I think that the election results certification, if you want to, so is your question, do you want to make comments prior to that certification? Or after? I understand your question.
I think Chris and I were thinking about passing the gavel essentially shortly here and then followed by the election certification. But if it's appropriate to wait until after the certification results to sign off, then we will happily do that.
And I'm trying to imagine, Dean, that all the counselors would like to say something before the shift also. So, you know, to your point. Thank you.
Well, I think if it's appropriate, those comments, any comments that we have could take place at this point in the agenda under council reports and actions. And I'd be happy to start with that if it's appropriate. And then acknowledging that we will move very quickly into certificate, certification of the results. So I'll just start and I'll get through this pretty quickly and as usual, fairly randomly in my delivery. But so it was about eight years ago, I was honored to receive the support of many of you out there to accumulate, actually at that time, more votes than any other candidate running for council in the history of Durango at that time. I was quickly surpassed, I might say, by a much bigger voter pool. That was quite a peak considering I was running against or probably more abruptly with incumbent Mayor Christina Rinderly, counselor and former mayor. But in that eight years, with the support of council, city staff and you, the voters, we have acquired, systematically acquired, more than 5,000 acres of open space in horse gulps over in Mountain Park and Adams Mountain, largely with the use of GOCO funding and at modest cost to taxpayers within the city of Durango. And that's a shout out to Kathy Metz, who has managed that fund and had a great history with GOCO and brought us probably more money to Durango, more state money to Durango than any other staff member in the history of Durango. We also annexed and created the management plan to open Lake Night Horse to the public. After years of virtually, the first four years of my term was honoring stakeholders and negotiating, most notably with the Southern Ute Tribe and the Ute Mountain Ute Tribe to bring Lake Night Horse to fruition and open it to the public. We studied all the available options for a new wastewater treatment facility that's been discussed this evening, the single largest expenditure in Durango history, $68 million, to take us 40 years into the future. We acquired land right away to complete the Animas River Trail north and south and develop new river access at Oxbow Park and Presy. I had the honor of cutting the ribbon to open that segment of the trail last year. We also added 29th Street put-in to relieve the congestion with the 32nd Street access. We designed and implemented Wilson Gulch Road. Well, not a lot of people are watching, but it connects Free Springs to the Bridge to Nowhere. Then facilitating a partnership with CDOT to fund the Farmington Hill bypass with a $100 million grant from State of Colorado funds to complete the highway, the new highway alignment into Durango on Highway 550. And if you will, shifting the access point and visual opportunities as for access into our community. We initiated new park designs for Santa Rita Park. As we just discussed, to fulfill promises made to voters that sand volleyball courts and basketball courts can enhance river access would return after completion of the wastewater facility. Thankfully, thankfully, we were approved that through this evening. We partnered with Fort Lewis College to create the Smith Sports Complex to expand soccer opportunities in Durango in support of the Durango Youth Soccer Association and the tournament competition they bring to Durango each year. I walked with Mark Katz on Ewing Mesa just prior to his purchase of a 1,860-acre parcel, which he is graciously donating portions to the city and the county, which is certain to become a world-class event space, unique and representative of the essence of Durango. My challenge to the community and staff was to consider an urban renewal authority specifically targeting eligible properties on North Main Avenue. That was my campaign, my campaign pledge. Staff responded by proposing character district to describe the types of future uses as development occurred in that corridor. That effort grew into eight more characters districts describing the potential and preferred standards for each unique district. Council passed an ordinance for formulation of the urban renewal authority, deemed the Durango Renewal Partnership, for which I served as the interim chair for the first months of its inception. As we recover and prosper from pandemic, this mechanism will help incentivize quality and meaningful development that will mean, that will really create the future of Durango. Along the way, August 5th, 2015, as I was a new mayor for the first term, I got a call from the district representative of the EPA asking what he could do for our community. I was in Puerto Rico at the time and I didn't understand that we had just had a 3 million gallon toxic waste bill about 67 miles north of us, felt the Gold King Mine. We ended up closing the river for eight days while we evaluated the impacts of that 3 million gallons of toxic waste as it flowed through our community. Senators Bennett and Gardner responded with a visit, immediate emergency response to our community. Governor Hickenlooper visited us in the following week as he understood our responsiveness and helped in the recovery and helped us reopen the river. Less than a year later, I requested and created a request for what has become, requested of Governor Hickenlooper, a request for what has become the Bene Gave Superfund Site and to create solutions for that 120 years of hard rock mining that has impacted our water supply and our watershed in Durango. Months later, I was asked to testify in Congress about the impacts of 120 years of hard rock mining and acid mined waste throughout the West and our community, how it affects particularly our community and downstream users. Other items, you know, I was really proud of being able to serve on the lens on to the Airport Commission for a couple of years while we developed the airport master plan. As an architect, I was able to have a little bit of oversight on that process without playing armchair architect. But we created a new terminal plan for the east side of the runway. It was magically, one night with former county commissioner Westendorf, and I presented a plan to Senator Gardner, who was a senator on the Transportation Subcommittee. And we were able to talk him into a $15 million appropriation of federal funds for that facility. However, it was not, it turned out that it was all for naught because the voters did not support an equal $45 million match, unfortunately. But we had the good fortune of acquiring another piece of property that became available and, excuse me, which was the impetus for the revised Airport Master Plan. was the impetus for the revised Airport Master Plan, which we are now thankfully slated to begin construction in 2024. Shortly after 416, never let up, never short of disasters, we had a 416 fire in a month of crisis, including, which was adequately handled by the council, Yusef and the team on council at that time, and was, was, and councillor Marbury guided us through that particular crisis, only to be followed by pandemic. And I've become kind of known as the disaster mayor. I don't take it personally, but we did, I wasn't anticipating a pandemic when I, when I, during my particular term, 2020, I thought sounded like a visionary year to be mayor. It turned out to be the year of pandemic. But in fact, I was introducing Governor Polis at the time to our Colorado Association of Ski Town meeting up in Denver, when he was notified that the first case of COVID was experienced in clinic in Frisco, Colorado. Since that time, March 5th, 2020, 38 of our neighbors in Durango and La Plata County have perished due to the COVID virus. We have worked hard as a council and a community to balance the, protect, with the protection of health of our citizens while nurturing the economic losses and the devastation to many of the individuals, particularly small businesses within our community. And we are just at the apex of climbing out and I hope the new council has the unique opportunity of utilizing approximately $1 million in funding that we have to, to help our businesses and our community climb out of this, of the recession that we've encountered. It's been an interesting year serving the public this year. I will be the first and hopefully only mayor to be sworn in virtually and conduct, and the only mayor to no, never conduct a meeting in council chambers. And I appreciate the assistance of all of us, all five of us on council that have endured this last year, talking not as personally on, from the diocese to the public as well as ourselves. It's, but I'm happy to pass the gavel this evening virtually. But the community knows when camp march on City Hall, somehow the protesters found my house down the street, we're very close to City Hall. And it's to the concern and some amusement, my neighbors have had a couple of demonstrations outside my house and so, and a few not so failed death threats and other forms of public, public protest on my particular property. But in love with that, in the life of a mayor, life is not complete without a failed recall petition. And so I always call it the recall, I think got about 50 votes, 50 signatures that even my ex-wives wouldn't sign, so I figured that was a success. But moving on, I was also proud to be the president of the Colorado Association of Ski Towns, representing Durango as a voice throughout the state. That organization particularly brought to light topics, common topics of housing, crisis, housing problems throughout, all of the recreation based economies throughout the state of Colorado, transportation issues that were recognized, that we have currently in Durango, as well as how we compare to other communities that serve recreating public throughout the state of Colorado, and particularly climate related issues, which I hope that new council can lend new focus on as we move forward and get us back on track to address the climate issues facing our particular environment here in Durango. Lastly, we cannot, we cannot forget what we have lived through this year. We are currently having an uptick in the coronavirus cases in Durango, Colorado. And so I don't want to leave this council with that explaining again to the public and that we have, just last week, 118 new cases of coronavirus in La Plata County, including one additional fatality. Again, stating the 38 deaths that have occurred during the pandemic over the, in La Plata County over the course of this pandemic, extend my condolences to those families. And we have in fact extended the mask ordinance through, I believe it's May 30th as a council and that will be standing with, regardless of what the state, what the governor does. Because we have specific circumstances here, we entertain a lot of folks that are coming to our community and we still need to protect our own individuals as well as offer a safe environment for those visitors that are coming to our community. And as I leave, as I leave this post, put my gavel on the shelf and walk down the street to a few friends that are gathering as we speak, a few mayors, councillors and friends that are joining me and councillor Bettin, I believe, at Steamworks for my usual post-council meeting, Colch, Colorado Colch in McEach. It's only night for late night food after, after a late night council meeting, so I'll leave you with that. I think my order is probably pretty, is ready. It's been an honor and I pass the gavel and I challenge the new council to use your vision. You are the future. Use your talent and your vision to guide us into the future and create, and create policy that will take us in this truly visionary for our community. That's what you were elected to do. Staff is here to conduct the day to day business. Don't get caught up in the minutia. Think at a high level and take us into the future. You know, I really want to thank all, you know, I thanked everybody that I'm gonna really truly miss. Probably to start with Karen Pease. Karen really runs the city if you don't know. No offense, Jose, our impressive councillors, we're the future mayor, but Karen has organized my life, you know, as I, we all have busy schedules. I have a full-time practice as president of Colorado Association of Ski Towns. It's a busy schedule that Karen was able to keep my life organized. Amy Phillips, who's always the source of great information and keeps us all on track and does, you know, major tasks, large and small. City attorney, you know, it's been, you came on board early, early in my term as well and it's so, and really guided us with a new vision and kept us legal for all these years. Amber Blake, who's the interim city manager, stepped up and was so awesome in a time of crisis and, you know, I won't get into the rest of the details, but were not so wonderful, but Amber was a bright light during that entire period of time. You know, all, all the department heads, I'll not take the time to name them all, but but particularly Victor and Mitchell in the IT folks that really make, take our voice and project it into the community via a number of places and especially during this time remote, you know, I learned Zoom from Mitchell, I can say that pretty much, you know, as many of us did as well and the new councillors will as well. And Victor is the guy that is the voice of Durango, so. But with that, I'll quit ambling. I just want to thank all the, you know, all the department heads, the boards and commissions, so many people, some of which spoke this evening, that have helped guide and inform council's actions throughout the past eight years. It's been an honor. Thank you very much. And with that, I think I'll walk on down the street and have a beer. So appreciate it and thank you and good night. Chris, you had some comments or thoughts?
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, sir, and thanks for your service and enjoy that beer. I think they're going to close soon, so you better get down there. Hey, I do want to thank the city staff, you're too numerous to name, and so you'll have to forgive me, but on my first day on council, I was so impressed with the presentation that was given there that I thought to myself, oh, I really have to get my act together. And that hasn't changed at all, but neither have those presentations and the quality of the folks that were giving them and the advice and counsel and all of those folks that are in the city. I have just really not met one that I haven't been utterly impressed with. And so thank you for your service to me, to the city and to the progress of our community. We would be nothing without you in my view. We can sit up here and pretend to be doing the running of the city, but certainly it's all about the folks that are really doing it. And so I thank you for that. And I wanted to thank a couple councillors, Sweetie Marbury and Dick White, who I was on council with the first term, along with Dean and Melissa as mentors to me. Dean, you know, now that you've left for the beer, but you were a rock to me through this whole experience. I remember one day sitting in frustration about all the hours that we were sitting around together and you quote, you're my famous quote of you as well. This is my favorite part of the day, getting to be here and weighing in all these issues and have an impact on our entire community. It's an honor to spend this time and I'll probably never forget that because I thought of it every time I got frustrated by the length of the meeting, probably even tonight. And Melissa, I, you know, we were friends when we started this way back when we were campaigning and then probably questioned that friendship along the way a few times, but I'm really glad to call you my friend here at the end of my road and grateful that you've kept going and are going to carry the torch into the future where I could not. I really feel that you've been the best among us in my view and your dedication to not only the intellectual curiosity and getting it right, but as important as your ability to build bridges in this community with just about everybody that you came in contact with. I think you are the epitome of what this job should be about and I really applaud you. Barbara, I have missed sitting next to you on the diocese and enjoyed our camaraderie there and that is hard to have on Zoom. I hope that this council can get back there soon as the differences sometimes melt in proximity, I think we would all agree. And Kim, I appreciate the seriousness with which you have taken community service and your obvious dedication to it over the last decade. Both of you, Barbara and Kim, you've been, you've shown such a sincere dedication to this job and you've always come prepared and have dug into the issues in such considerate depth. It can be said that no matter our differences, I do believe heartily that all of us are here only to give back to the community and you two have demonstrated incredible commitment and dedication to doing so. I wish you all the best in your future on council. And I want to welcome Jessica and Olivier. Congratulations and I want to tell you I'm here for you in any way I can be of service to you. One of the greatest assets I benefited from was the knowledge of those who came before me and I hope you won't hesitate to ask if I can ever be of any assistance to you. Thanks to my coworkers, especially Keith and Mary Beth for picking up my slack and thanks to friends for tolerating my absences. Thanks also to our community for your support through some of the most challenging times our city has faced. And lastly, thanks to my family, Christina and Dylan. You didn't even want me to do this and you know what? You were right again, but that's okay. You were patient with all the times I couldn't be there and I'm looking forward to giving back my every Tuesday night and so many other hours to you and to our future. And thanks for any support, patience and love. And I will miss all of you, but I too am going to go have a beer and I enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you, Chris, and I just wanted to acknowledge the, and thanks sincerely for the, well, for Jose for the note that I just opened up a little while ago. Thank you so much for being here and joining our community and appreciate the acknowledgement and recognition in this, in this slow momento. I'll put it behind my gavel over on my, and with that, I'll officially.
No way, not yet. There's no chance.
I was going to pass the gavel. Okay.
Derek wants to say something, but I wanted to say something to both of you.
Before we all go away and have a beer, we need to certify the election results, but so don't go away.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I just, I just wanted, if I can, I'll try to be quick, but I can't let you guys go without saying a few words. You guys both said such nice stuff. I, I wanted to just start very quickly by thanking the citizens of Durango for their support in my reelection. I, I was completely speechless at a last meeting. I couldn't even get my head around anything, so I, I wanted to thank you. I want to thank you for your confidence and your trust. I am passionate about serving and I look forward to it. We have a lot of important work to do and I look forward to doing a lot of that work with the many of you that I've established relationships and friendships with. So be ready to continue working together. I also want to thank all the candidates who stepped forward. I really appreciated running with them. Harrison Went, Seth Fertney, Frank Lockwood and Lisa McCory. I hope you stay involved. I hope we get to continue to work together. I thought you all did a phenomenal job preparing for all of the work that we had to prepare for in the campaign and I hope that we get to continue working together. I learned a lot from all of you. And I want to thank our newly elected councillors as well, Jessica and Olivier. I look forward to working with you. I think you both will bring a great new diversity to our, our team and I look forward to progressing forward and many, many meetings ahead with you both. And lastly, but certainly not least, I want to special, send a special note of thanks to our mayor and, and Chris, Dean. Dean and Chris, I want to thank you, Dean, for your leadership this past year. Most importantly, thank you for your dedication and service to the community for the past eight years. Your dedication, devotion and service has been remarkable, a huge demonstration of commitment, care and concern for our community. I know you will stay involved, informed and that you will continue to be an active community participant. I hope you know that I will continue to lean on you for your history, knowledge and insights. I have your personal cell, I might move that to my favorites, so beware. I've really appreciated working with you, getting to know you, establishing a strong relationship that we have built together of trust and respect. And you have been a great example of a leader that is fair and representative of the people. You listen, you're responsive and you are willing to change your position. You've been a good leader for our community, a great mayor, and you will be missed. And to my friend and colleague councillor Bettin, he's also my partner in crime since we ran together four years ago at the same time. I don't mean to re-ryme, but I kind of do because we wrote this poem together. I'm going to share just a few lines of that before, but before I do, I want to thank Chris. Chris and Dean both have done an amazing job balancing work, family and obligations these past four years. Chris has juggled a huge amount as a very active business owner and busy father, calling in once from the state playoffs that he was in attendance with, with his son. It's a tough job to do while working as hard as both Chris and Dean work managing their businesses. And I've sincerely appreciated though, having Chris's business perspective and real estate perspective to lean on as a team. I have a tremendous amount of respect for Chris's business acumen, knowledge and perspective and I can't tell you how many times I've looked to both Chris and Dean for their thoughts and input. I will miss serving with both of you on council tremendously. And Dean, I know that you're turned out. Chris, I appreciate and respect your position not to run again. It is a massive commitment. But you know, you don't always leave positions as councillors almost in a stronger relationship than when you started, but I feel so thankful to be able to say that with both of you as my friends and colleagues. And I want to just rewrite a few words of this poem that Chris and I wrote together. I had to cut in pace because not all of it is ready for primetime or the record at this point, but just a few lines, I think you'll get the gist. And some of it is, "2020 left its mark" is the title. From pandemic to bump outs to new code red, we adjust and respond and we keep moving on. And a big hooray, hooray for the URA, finally something to save the economic day. Too bad urban renewal here, urban renewal authority is so hard to say. But please, would you wear your masks? How many times do we have to ask? Chris Bettin's term will never end. It does not go by fast, it just lasts and lasts. What could possibly be next? A city manager search, double the meetings, there will be when we're sleeping. Zoom, zoom, we're in a virtual room. I've got to go dark to take a small bite of the meal I missed last night. Bring on smart 160 and let's pass under Camino Del Rio. It does, it's not one or the other. It could be a trio. And Jose Madrigal, welcome to the boat, 100 day plan, tell us more. It could be the antidote. And now we look forward to a strategic plan and new vision for Durango. Get ready to participate. It takes all of us to tango from a year that we remembered for difficulty throughout to well wishes for a new year. May 2021 be a knockout. So this is what we do for fun in our spare time. Not sure about all of you, but as you can tell, I'm going to miss working with these guys. And it about sums it up when you can have fun like that with a departing councillor and so I'm really going to miss all of you, both of you.
Bravo, that was great.
Bravo, yeah, thanks for the poem. I thought I was going to make it out without hearing that, but here we are.
I had to kill a few of those lines, not all of them.
Can I say a few words too before you go for your beers? First of all, I want to just recognize the folks that ran for city council in this election and in previous elections because just the fact of running is grueling and it's, you just never know where it's going to go. So I want to recognize all those folks, first of all, that just ran for office and were willing to put themselves out there this election and past. And then I, I also want to recognize previous councillors and the commitment they, they have made because it is a lot of work. But in particular, I do want to recognize Dean and Chris and Melissa, particularly because I don't think people realize how much work it is. And both Dean and Chris, you both had. And both Dean and Chris, you both had full-time, full-time jobs and families. And Melissa, I know you had many other activities going on as well as a family and yet you still showed up and, and, and were there for, for the thinking behind it. And Chris, I just want to recognize that when we sat on the dais, it was fun that you would always try to, to pass me a candy and I would try to refuse because I didn't want to get choked up on something. And then I would try to pour you water and it was those simple acts, I think of me have kindness just back and forth that is missed when we're zooming away and that sometimes those, those impromptu conversations. I appreciated that. I appreciated the, just the, the lightness that was sometimes needed and brought to an occasion. And Dean, in classic form, you go out being mayor, reminding us of public health and our duties. And in this past year of the pandemic, I think that it's been so important that we look at what we can do as a community to keep ourselves safe. And that was something particularly this year, you were always bringing to the forefront of what do we need to be doing? And with everything else that's been said, I appreciate that in particular is the, the real commitment to the public well-being. And I wish you both a wonderful time away and time with your families and time doing other things and thank you for your service. And Melissa, congratulations and I look forward to working together with you. And of course I look forward to my new colleagues on city council, but thank you both for your service.
Thank you, Barbara. Can I get a picture of everybody? I gotta get a picture of you.
Do I get to say something, Dean?
Sure. I got my photo. Yeah, you're good.
I, you know, there, there isn't much else I can add. I think everyone has been very accurate in their assessment of how we've all worked together. And I do want to say that I recognize that the last two years have been filled with many more hours of commitment and reading and work and showing up for meetings and being there and dedication than possibly some other counselors have had to deal with in the past. And I appreciate the willingness that both of you, Chris and Dean, have had to step up and do that and make it happen. Time challenges are, are big. And I, I think that although we have not always agreed, I really want to thank you for your support of all the positive changes that have come about in the past two years. And I think it's going to, it has and it will continue to create a positive impact on the city organization and on the community. And so I value that and I appreciate it and say thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Thanks, well, thanks a whole.
Well, as a next, I guess, as I've been advised, we do need to stick around for the, not stick around, we'll anticipate and look forward to the certificate of election results.
And may I, may I make a request just because I don't want it to get lost?
Sure.
Before we administer the oath of office, can we take a five-minute break? We've been here for, you guys get to take a big break. You get to go out of here, but we've been here for three and a half hours and we're going to be here for a while longer. Would you all mind if we did that?
I think that would be total appropriate. We have consensus and, and you don't get any pushback from Chris or I, so it's all yours. I think it's, it's yours to, to request. And usually that's, that's reserved for punching cookies and Amy's always got a cake and a pitcher of lemonade for us, but, but not this year.
We don't.
Yeah. So with that, who's in charge of the election results? That sounds like Amy Phillips.
Yes, sir. And I want to say thank you Mayor Brooke and Counselor Bateen for your sincere service and Counselor Yussa for your continued service. So city counselors, it is with great pleasure that tonight we certify the April 6th, 2021 election results. Pursuant to the Durango City Charter and the Uniform Election Code of 1992, the following are the results for the City of Durango's regular municipal election. The election was conducted to elect three city counselors from a field of six candidates and to ask the voters question 1A, authorization to increase the city's lodgers tax from 2% to 5.25%. The three candidates receiving the most votes will be sworn in for terms of four years. As reflected in the certification, Melissa Yussa received 3,774 votes. Jessica Buell received 2,679 votes and Olivier Bosman received 1,850 votes. Question 1A passed with 2,574 votes in support of the lodgers tax increase and 2,418 votes were cast in opposition. The canvas of votes verified that 13,742 ballots were distributed to active registered voters and those inactive registered voters who requested a ballot. Of that number, 12,768 ballots were delivered to voters and 974 ballots were returned marked undeliverable. The total of 5,121 ballots were counted, resulting in a 40% voter turnout based on the total ballots delivered to voters or a 37% voter turnout based on the number of ballots distributed. Thirty-five ballots were rejected due to invalid signatures. Letters were mailed to each voter and a curing time was allowed until April 14th, 2021. Eleven ballots were cured within the grace period. The total number of ballots cast in 2021 election increased by 651 ballots from those cast in 2019 or a 13% increase. The total expense associated with the election is not known at this time because we are pending the arrival from the final bill from La Plata County Clerk and Recorder. The budgeted amount for the election was 28,000. I want to pause to take just a quick moment to thank the city council, city manager, city attorney, all of the council candidates, Fay Harmer, Ben Flureen, Kathy Snyder, Todd Ellison and our fantastic county clerk Tiffany Lee and election administrator Erin Hutchins and their staff for a very successful election. So with that, it is the recommendation of the city manager, the city attorney and myself that counsel by motion approve the April 6th, 2021 certification of election results.
With that, do I hear a motion?
I would so move.
It's been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second and may we have a roll call, please, Ms. Phillips?
Counselor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bateen?
Yes.
Counselor Yussa?
Yes.
And Mayor Broke.
Yes. Thank you so much. And geez, Chris, I think that's it for you and I. Thank God for term limits. So appreciate it. I'd stand up, but I don't have pants on, so I, you know, I'll just mute out. So thanks again. Take care.
We're gonna miss that, Dean. We're gonna miss that. So I'm guessing since I'm mayor pro town and the mayor just left, that now I kind of take over the agenda here? Okay. So before we administer oaths of office, may we take a five-minute break? Okay. So 9:50 it is, 9:55 we'll see you all back here. Hello, everyone. We're back. Thank you for joining us. It's good to see our Counselor Alex here and our next agenda item under procedures is 13.2, which is the administration of oaths of office for our new counselors. And I think our city clerk Amy Phillips will be handling that.
Okay. If I can have the three newly elected counselors and we're all going to swear in at the same time. So what we'll do is everyone will raise the right hand and then I'm going to say aye and then you're going to state your name individually so that everybody hears your name and then do solemnly declare. Okay? So if you could raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye.
And then Ms. Buell, if you'll go first.
Jessica Buell.
Melissa? You're muted.
Melissa Yussa?
Olivier.
Olivier Bosman.
Do solemnly swear, declare.
Do solemnly declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Durango.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Durango.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of city counselor for the City of Durango.
Of city counselor for the City of Durango.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And welcome. This is very exciting. Thank you all for, for running for council and I'm so excited that you're all joining us and it'll be a great year coming up. Anything else, Amy, that we need to do before we move on to the next agenda item?
No, not at all.
Okay. So agenda item 13.3 is the election of mayor. And what's the normal process for this, Dirk or Amy?
We take a nominate, we take nominations from the floor and then we will vote on them.
Excellent. Barbara?
So I nominate that Kim Baxter, current mayor pro tem, serve as mayor for the coming year. I'd like to add in there that I have worked with Kim for the past two years. I've seen the dedication that she brings, the thoroughness that she brings to it and the strategic thinking for the key things we need to be working on to address our strategic goals. So I make a motion to elect Kim Baxter as mayor.
I'll second.
All right.
Is there any discussion? All right. So shall we have a roll call?
Counselor Yussa?
Yes.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman?
You are muted, Olivia. Thank you.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes. Thank you all. I appreciate it. I look forward to this year with you all. So the next item is 13.4. Oh, well, should I say something? Can I say something? I actually have something to say. I forget about these things, obviously. So I just wanted to say that my focus as mayor this year will be very consistent with my vision when I ran for council and when I was elected, which you all have heard this so many times, but it's a diverse, that our community be a diverse, multi-generational community with good paying jobs, workforce housing and enhanced quality of life. And my main focus, my priority will be on workforce housing. So things like housing for police, teachers, firefighters. And I want to work to create a policy for funding the workforce housing development without raising taxes and support staff on initiating programs that will bring meaningful change to housing attainability. And, and the other aspect of this coming year for me will be supporting Jose and staff in two key areas. And that'll be continuing the shift in the organizational culture that instills a strong emphasis on customer service and customer orientation to benefit our community and its members and also to continue improvement in financial transparency and accountability and reporting to our community. So thank you very much. 13.4 is election of mayor pro tem. And we'll do it in the same way. We'll get a nomination or a motion and then we'll go from there.
I'll make the motion to elect Counselor Noseworthy to mayor pro tem.
I'll second. I know that's out of order, but I really like this. Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have any discussion? I'm sorry. I'm not used to writing the agenda yet. I know, Melissa, that you were challenged the same way when you took over. So do we have any discussion? And shall we do a roll call?
Counselor Yussa?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman? Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes, and I'm very excited to work with you in this capacity, Barbara. Thank you. Do you want to say something?
First of all, welcome to the new counselors and to Melissa returning. I'm looking forward to working with you and also to working with Kim to help achieve both her vision and the vision of council, in particular, the larger council in this coming year. Thanks.
Okay. So, oh, now we need to do 13.5, which is administration of oaths of office to the mayor and the mayor pro tem.
Yes, and we'll do yours, the two of y'all individually because of having different duties. So Mayor Baxter, if you will raise your right hand. I, Kim Baxter, do solemnly declare.
I, Kim Baxter, do solemnly declare.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Durango.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Durango.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of mayor of the City of Durango.
Of mayor of the City of Durango.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Mayor Pro Tem Noseworthy, if you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Barbara Noseworthy, do solemnly declare.
I, Barbara Noseworthy, do solemnly declare.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Durango.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Durango.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform the duty.
Of mayor pro tem for the City of Durango.
Of mayor pro tem for the City of Durango.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Excellent. Okay, so now we do a city council roll call.
Counselor Bosman?
Present.
Counselor Buell? Counselor Yussa?
Still here.
Mayor Pro Tem Noseworthy?
Present.
And Mayor Baxter?
Present. So item number 15 is the identification of actual or perceived conflicts of interest. Do any city counselors have any of those for our upcoming agenda? No? Okay, great. Thank you. And then there's a review of the consent agenda, which of course I just said ago. The consent agenda is intended to allow the city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under agenda item 16.5 or 16. No, 16, since we missed that in there, didn't we?
Yes.
Okay.
Good.
Is, is there, are there any agenda, consent agenda items that any counselor wishes to remove from the list? No? Okay, a reading of the consent agenda, please.
Item 16.1 is discussion impossible action regarding an implied consent agreement for water service to a commercial property at 114. Tail. for water service to a commercial property at 114 Tail Dragon Lane, Animas Air Park. Item 16.2 and 16.3 are requests for public hearings with a proposed date of May 4, 2021. 16.2 is to consider the mile-to-wild conceptual development plan, 50 Animis View Drive, and 16.3 is to consider the Best Western Minor Subdivision and Variance at 21382 Highway 160 West.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Maybe I can start off running. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. In a second?
I'll second.
Excellent. Roll call or a vote?
Counselor Buell? Buell, I'm sorry. Jessica Buell. Gosh, getting late. Sorry about that.
Yes.
Counselor Bosman?
Yes.
Counselor Yussa?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. And then we're on to public hearings. So the City Council previously directed staff to publish notice of public hearing for each hearing listed below. The following proposed ordinances or topics have been set for public hearing at this meeting. The issues dealt with in this section of the agenda are of a legislative or policy nature. This is a virtual meeting. The procedure for public hearings has been adjusted. So to contribute, oh, no, actually I can read those instead of telling people where to go. Okay. Sorry. Ah ha. This is the one I wanted from Mitchell, so. First of all, we'll go. I'm going to introduce the topic by title and then the staff member will make a presentation. I'm sorry, it is so late for me right now. I apologize. So this is 17.2, a public hearing to consider an ordinance authorizing a lease with Keith and Mary Fassbender at the airport. This would be Tony Vicari, our Airport Director.
Good evening, City Council. In lieu of the late hour, I'll keep this brief. Tonight's agenda item simply considers an agricultural lease agreement with Keith and Mary Fassbender. The parcel in consideration here is approximately 65 acres in size located to the west of the primary airfield. This is city and county-owned land in the Florida River Valley Airport. The land is currently used for like purposes, currently leased to the same party on a prior 10-year lease term. On that, the land is currently under deed restrictions for agricultural use and so it will remain under agricultural use in perpetuity. It's on the airport layout plan as non-aeronautical in use, so there's no aeronautical development proposed for the premise. Primary benefit to the airport to leasing this land for agricultural use aside from consistency with the deed requirements is to ensure beneficial use of the land, primarily premise maintenance largely related to fence upkeep, weed spray, animal control, et cetera, on the land. The proposed lease is for a simple five-year term. Does authorize the airport to be able to exit that term in any given, at the end of any given agricultural growing season cycle, dependent on any kind of airport needs that might develop at this time. So fairly straightforward, really no major change from current use of premise. So happy to answer any questions.
I'm gonna jump in. Tony, thank you. Thank you. Does this lease come with any water rights?
It does not. There's no water rights associated with the lease. The airport does draw its water supply out of the Florida River. Adjacent to this area, there's actually an exclusion on the lease premise to keep any kind of cattle grazing away from the infiltration gallery used to produce water for the airport itself. And this would not in any way interrupt our ability to produce water through the airport's water rights.
So all water that they would be using would be coming from their own private sources?
Indeed. The proposed LSE is an adjacent landowner with Ditch Rights Act water rights.
Thank you.
Any other questions by council? Okay, in that case, we will open the public meeting. And to keep the meeting moving along, we're limiting comments to three minutes. Please keep your eye on our moderator, Mitchell, and he will, there will actually, I'm sorry, we now have a clock that we didn't have two months ago or a month ago, so now you'll see a clock so you know how long you have to speak. Use the raise hand function if you're using the Zoom app to indicate that you would like to provide comments. If you're called into the meeting using your telephone, press star nine to raise your hand. Our moderator will announce the next person to speak and will ask you to unmute yourself at that time. I would like to remind everyone to remain civil. And in this public forum, we encourage everyone to express their views and opinions, but please do so in a respectful manner, free of explicit or derogatory language. You will be asked to state your first and last name and whether you are a city resident for the record. With that, Mitchell, do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have some attendees still with us tonight, but nobody has raised their hand. If you are here in this meeting with us still and you want to speak to Agenda Item 17.2, now is your opportunity. Mayor, I'm not seeing anybody raise their hand.
All righty, thank you very much. Then I will go ahead and close the public testimony. And are there any further questions of council, of staff? No? Okay, then I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and we need to make a motion. I will entertain a motion on this topic.
Tony, do you have that written up that can be presented with us?
Do, I can share my screen if you want to. Are you able to see the motion?
Sure, I'll jump in. I recommend that the City Manager and the Aviation Director. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, I can't see it that well. I recommend that the City Council by motion. Sorry, folks, my vision's not working. I can't see it on Tony's screen.
You want me to get it? I got it, okay. I recommend. Okay, I get it. I recommend that the City Council by motion direct the City Attorney to draft an ordinance authorizing the City Manager to execute a lease with Keith and Mary Fassbender for agricultural operations at the airport.
Second.
Discussion? Then we'll take a roll call. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, Noseworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Yussa?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. That passes. So now we'll move on to administrative. And 18, oh, sorry, 18.2, which is a city update, and 18.2.1, which is a financial update. And I'm guessing that Jose and Cynthia will be handling that.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Council. Cynthia Snead, our Finance Director, will be giving the financial updates for this, for our most recent financial update. And then I do have a few other updates, inner-city updates to pass on after her completion. Cynthia?
Thank you, Jose. Thank you, Mayor and counselors. Congratulations to the newly installed counselors. I've tried to share my screen. Can you see that? Okay, great. In keeping with the theme of new, the new council for tonight, we have redesigned the sales tax collection report. This is the new design, and so this represents the January sales tax collections. Want to point out what some of the differences. One is that we are now presenting budget information, which was not included on a previous report.
I'm sorry, yeah, sorry, sorry to interrupt, but could you make it just a little bit larger? I tried to say it, but I was on mute.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it too.
How's that look?
Much better.
Okay, great. So in this blue box is the estimated year-to-date budget. Now, of course, we budget on an annual basis, and so we've had to break that down and in some manner to provide a monthly amount. And so we looked to historical collections and used the percentages collected in the past to allocate out the annual budget amount. So we present, this month we're presenting January. In the green box here, we start with the budget and then the collections of the various sales tax varieties. And you can see that we are, we collected more than we budgeted for January, which is always a very good thing. January represents, the budget represents the 10.7% of our annual collections. And the budget that was prepared for this year was, we notched it down by 8% because of the COVID, but we came in higher than that by 12%. So that's all very good news. And then the largest tax over here, we collected 58%, so we're down quite a bit there. But we left 58% of what we had budgeted, so we were down by 42% on that. So that's our new sales tax. Report. It's so big, I don't know if I can get it all on my screen here. So then now we're gonna move on to the budget to actual in the various funds, and we're starting with the general fund. Again, we're breaking this down, the estimated year-to-date budget, taking the annual budget and based on historical actuals, we allocated an amount to, for the, in this case, one month, January, for the year-to-date. Over here, the restricted funds, restricted equity is basically the fund balance and part of that is restricted. That's the Tabor 3% requirement plus some police confiscation that is also considered restricted. But what you can see here is, this is the revenues imposed, superimposed over the expenses. And we're generally in line with what we had expected. One exception to that is the charges for services, which is the recreation fees that came in less than budgeted. And then you'll notice it's zero here down on the property tax and the sales tax. That is, sales tax, the property tax is getting booked back to December for the, in the month of January, it gets booked back to December for financial statement presentation purposes. So it shows zero, but we will still have 12 months. It just will be not showing in January, if that makes sense. So January is a very common, commonly, common month that we're down in revenues and a little bit higher than normal in expenses because departments get their new budgets and they start buying things in January. So it kind of artificially inflates the expenses. So what we're showing here, the red X, it shows that we were down, behind what we had anticipated, but that's somewhat to be expected for January.
Cynthia, I had a question. In the breakout of the equity, the current year results are negative 786,000, but the actual year-to-date results are 1,001 negative?
The difference really is in the encumbrances, that those are, how those are captured. It just shows a bit different. You'll see it's, if you netted those together, it would would be pretty close. Does that make sense?
No, I'm not seeing how netting 1.3 million and a negative 286 gives you a negative 1.1.
Okay, so part of the challenge with this report is that the way we calculate equity is derived from the balance sheet. And then, of course, revenues and expenditures is going to be income statement related. So this is a calculated amount by stripping out certain things off of the balance sheet that don't apply. So we never are gonna get exactly the same amount, but we get really close.
Okay. We'll talk about that later.
Okay. So then the expenditures, you can see the revenue and expenditures are tracking pretty closely, except for the parson rec, which is related to the services that are not really operating right now because of COVID. And that is offset over here with the charges for services. You see the correlation there. Any other questions on that before I move on? Great. So this sheet represents our enterprise funds. We did a little bit different approach this time as well. We, previously, we did not include the capital expenses here on this slide, but this, starting this month, we're gonna include those just to represent that we have the capital expenditures and capital fund out there that are related to each one of the enterprise funds. So we've got, the green check mark means we ended up in a positive position at the end of the month, and then the red X indicates not as much. But I also want to remind you that this is January. It's one month of activity. It's, we've got a long way to go for, you know, to the end of the year, so things are gonna be moving throughout the year. I also want to point out that this capital line, oops, is not included in calculating the head and behind. That's calculated only on the operating revenues and operating expenses.
So I love the idea that you've added the capital expense in there, and I'm guessing when we do the quarterly CIP conversation, that that's how it'll apply directly to whatever that quarterly number is?
That's correct.
Thank you.
That's correct.
And Cynthia, I also have a question on that, and thank you again for adding that. I probably sound like a broken record, but I'm hoping sometime this quarter you'll be able to really dig into that large fund balance and give us greater clarity on some of the, any other issues around that. Is that still, I'm assuming, on your very long to-do list?
Both of those statements are true. Yes, we are working, we have engaged the consultants to help us. Because that list is so long, it would be impossible for us to get everything done. We wanted to get done timely. So we have engaged the consultants, and one of the projects that they are working on is looking at the water fund balance. So that, and that work is in process now. So hopefully soon we will have something to bring back to you.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Certainly. Okay, so in the Transportation Services Fund, you can see that expenses were much greater than the revenues, so we're in a deficit position there. But again, I want to say that it's just January, so we have a long ways to go. But when we look at the budget component, the actual to budget, the expenses were down enough to, at the end of the day, we, at the end of the month, we ended up in a better place from the, you know, compared to the budget, from the actuals compared to the budget. Okay, over here on the Sewer Fund, the lion's share of this expense, which is what's causing us to go into a deficit, is related to the debt service payments. That was $1.7 million that occurred in January. So we strip that out, it's really not that big of a deficit. One thing that we need to do a better job of is indicating which month, because we know what month those debt service payments come in, is to apply that to the correct month. It's kind of the challenge with going from an annual budget and trying to parse it out to months. As we, we're refining that as we go, but that's really what caused this piece here. And then the Sustainable Services Fund ended up in a positive, ahead position. And then the airport, a little bit down, but again, it's January. We have a long way to go.
I'll ask you a quick question here.
Certainly.
Can you briefly explain the four line items in being there, the budget basis fund balance, and why you have restricted line items on this sheet? balance, and why you have restricted line items on this sheet? Because I think for this, do we have restricted funds on these funds for enterprise?
For enterprise funds, not, we don't really have the restricted funds for enterprise. You see that more commonly in the other funds. But the, so that's the restriction part. The budget basis fund balance really refers to, it's an accounting, a difference in accounting from our financial reporting, you know, accounting standards versus the accounting basis for budget. So budget's going to be much more cash-driven, money coming in, money coming out, and what's, what is available to spend. Whereas on the, for accounting purposes, we have the accounting standards where we have a lot of other entries that have to be made, whether that's depreciation or other items that don't really affect the inflows and outflows of cash, the kind of non-cash components. So we adjust those. That's what we start with, with our audited balances, and then we strip out the things that don't affect the budget to come up with a budget basis fund balance. So that represents more, a more true picture of what is available for budget purposes or for, you know, for extended.
The reason I asked is, I think for the waterfront, there's an accumulated 17 million, that's the number you have here, yeah? That is the money set aside or accumulating for upgrades or, you know, for investments, capital improvements. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct, and it is a quite high balance. We, there was a rate increase several years back with the intention to build a new facility, a water treatment plant, and that has not yet been built, and so we've been accumulating dollars. And that is, that's exactly what we talked about a moment ago, that we're having some consultants to help us really pick apart what's in that fund balance and what is, how do we need to adjust for that? And we'll see what they come up with in terms of adjusting rates or, you know, potential capital projects that would spend down some of that fund balance. It's kind of a, it's an accumulation, it's...
It's, yeah, if I can help in, Cynthia. It's a fund balance that has accumulated over the years, and we do have a study going into finding out exactly what we need to be able to do with that funding, being that myself and Cynthia are relatively new. There is some history that goes with where that fund balance is derived from. What we're looking to do is begin to take a look at that fund balance and kind of portray it with our consultants, just kind of what we need to do with that fund balance and allow the council to understand what options might be available. We are in a process right now of looking, a water mashup plan being done, talking about a possible treatment plant, and talking about what part of that funding may be able to be contributed to it. But it hasn't, not that I know of, since I've been here, hasn't actually been officially earmarked for anything. It's just been talked about that that might have been some considerations for the commitment for that funding by possibly past discussions with councils. But we don't have anything officially earmarked with that as of right now.
Counselor Nosworthy?
Yeah, I'd just like to add for the new counselor's clarification also, that fund balance, in the past, previous councils had appropriated dollars for specific CIP, capital improvement, projects. Those projects were not completed or all expenditures were not made. And in keeping with our new CIP policy that was adopted, those, any unexpended expenditures need to go back for reconsideration, reappropriation. So basically, there, a significant amount of funds were appropriated, those were not, those projects were not completed, and that is also part of why we have this large fund balance.
And it's our need for finding out what exactly it is composed of. So I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Nosworthy, I called you counselor. I'm going to try to make, be better at that.
I'm not the one to stand on ceremony, but thank you.
Any other questions so far?
Okay, carrying none, I'm going to move on to our special revenue funds. So special revenue funds are designed, you know, revenues for a specific purpose. So it's sort of that restricted concept where definite restrictions on what it can be spent on. So the good news, but that all of, at this point, in January, all of these funds are in a, in a positive, ahead standpoint. We have the green checkmarks on all of them. This 2015 half-cent sales tax fund is for Recreation Complex and Trails. Again, it's early in the year, there's not really a whole lot to note here. Because these are very capital project oriented, it's early in the year, we haven't ramped up, and so it's too much with our projects, and so the expenses you'll see are a little bit lower for those that are capital in nature. The 2005 one-quarter cent debt service sales tax fund, the revenues that come into this are sales tax, and additionally, some road impact fee funds get transferred in here. And then the expenses that go out are to pay off the debt service, debt service payments for our obligations there. So that's, that's a very, you know, simple in-and-out sort of fund.
Cynthia, a question on that one. The reason why the road impact fees are transferred in is because we're not, we don't have enough revenue to actually pay the bond payments?
It's, that's, that's correct. The sales tax coming in is not always enough to make the debt service, and so it's for the same overall purpose, and so we bring some, transfer some in from the road impact fee fund.
Right, and theoretically, we would catch up with that, and somewhere around October, we'd be back to even on that, probably. That's kind of the way it's happened in the past, because our summertime, we get more sales tax?
Yes, that's, that's true. It takes much of the year to get, get enough accumulated to put through the sales tax only to cover the debt service payments.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome. And the Durango Tourism Fund is the lodgers tax money that's been, the 2%, that historically has come in. Both are under budget and in a positive position, both meaning the revenue and expenditures are, came in, the actuals came in under budget and both in a positive position. The 2005 one-quarter cent sales tax for the OSPT is an acronym for the Open Space Parks and Trails. So this is very capital-driven here. Sales tax is the revenue, and so far, in the first month, we had no expenses. So we're showing positive there.
Cynthia, will the acquisition of the Durango Mesa bonus significant, some of that, will it significant of that 1.5 come out of that 2005? And would that be reducing the fund balance? Or is that all based on last year's numbers?
It would be, it would reduce this down to about half, yes. So the fund balance is 3 million, and when we pay the 1.5 million, it's going to bring that down.
And the 1.5 million is in the budget for 2021?
That is a, well, it will be. That's a Devon question. Devon, are you on?
I believe we approved it back in August of 2020, so I'm just not certain when it would hit the budget, it would have hit the budget.
Well, wouldn't it have been the 2020 budget?
Yeah, and so this was one of those where the funds would have been somewhat handled as an encumbrance, because we had anticipated the purchase of the land last fall. However, with negotiation, those items didn't happen. So if you look at the 2021 budget, you should see it in there under that estimated 2021 actuals. So from a budget standpoint, we did include that when we were looking at fund balance moving forward, because we, you know, we had really thought that we were going to purchase that. From a budget standpoint, however, that part would be carried forward into 2021, since that estimated actual was not actually spent.
So will you be, when you spend that money, will you be adjusting the fund balance rather than putting it into expenses?
Um, yes, so it would come out of this fund, fund balance that we're seeing here, since that actual amount has not been incurred yet.
So when, so when that happens, you'll add an extra line in here showing the beginning fund balance, any adjustments to it, and the ending fund balance?
I don't see why we couldn't if that's a request of council.
Just to have the budget, fund balance drop by 1,500 with no explanation, and no, that would not be...
Well, it would, it would be reflected in the expenses. So you would see the 1.5 million in the expenses, and then the offset is, fund balance is reduced by that same amount.
Okay, but, and if we're going to do it that way, then we have to note so that the public knows that that was actually in the fund balance from the previous year, if I understand Devon correctly. Because it is in the budget, and if it, if it's not in the budget numbers, then normally we would have to appropriate it. But if it was appropriated last year and it's in the fund balance, then that's a different fact.
So it would have been appropriated, it was appropriated last year, as you recall. The, I guess the big difference and the driver is when you're looking at the columns and thinking about the budgets, we included it in that 2020 estimated actual spend, because the plan was for that acquisition to occur in 2020. Since it didn't occur, it was part of that initial fund balance. And so as it comes into the 2021 budget, since that's where it's going to actually be spent out of, those expenditures would have already been accounted for in that fund balance since the 2020 estimated actuals and the 2021 share that same fund balance logic from a budget standpoint. But as we're looking at the budget, and as Cynthia mentioned, it'll certainly be within the actuals as it comes forward. We could certainly footnote it, or it would come through on that CIP report when we get that first quarter wind done, where it'll show the different budgets and the amounts. But, you know, whatever council's desire is so that that's transparent and easy, we're happy to do.
Well, let's, let's fast forward to the end of the year, and everything else worked according to budget, except this 1.5 million dollars. We're going to look like we're 1.5 million dollars over budget, and we never had, we never authorized that. So there has to be some sort of explanation for that, so that people understand.
Absolutely, and I guess the challenge with this one is, you know, it would have been handled as an encumbrance had the acquisition occurred as it was supposed to, or would have just hit last year as an actual, since it had to move forward. That was kind of the process that occurred.
I understand, I'm just saying we need to, in the interest of transparency, we need to be really clear about what's happening.
Okay. Any other questions on that before we move on?
Thank you.
Okay, the 2009 half-cent sales tax fund is the Streets Improvement Fund, and so that is, that's tracking just fine at this point. We did do a budget appropriate, an additional appropriation of about almost a million dollars on this, this fund, but that was in the, I think that happened after January, so it may not be reflected in this, in these numbers.
I have a question for Jose. I recognize, Jose, I recognize it's January, and we want things done right, but we also want our streets and alleys fixed. And so I'm aware that the expenses are not consistent with what we had budgeted. So I'm just looking for some comment from you of, are we intending, are we intending to like double our expenses next month or in the coming months to actually make certain we address as many streets as possible?
Yeah, I don't know if we're intentionally looking to double it, but just because it's January, it's not going to give that clear, accurate picture, but we are definitely not holding back or delaying our projects. We are pushing them forward, so we should start seeing those numbers rise as the months go on.
Thank you.
And then this last one, the Capital Projects Fund, this is the one that, at council's direction, we, we looked at and separated out the projects and moved many of them out and over into the 2015 half-cent sales tax fund. So it's, that's kind of winding down, there's, there's not much of activity in that, but that's that.
That's great. There was a change made to this form, yeah, on the budget. Can you explain a little bit what the initial version showed under the budget number for operating expenses, and how you ended up having a different estimated year-to-date budget number?
I am going to defer that one to Devon, because she designed this format in conjunction with, with some input from, from council. This was, the redesign happened before I started, and I don't know the history of what was compared to what is.
Certainly. So I, I guess in a lot of cases in finance, what we had done historically is we would compare to the year prior, and not necessarily look at statistical previous year's analysis to say, you know, what do we actually collect in a given month based on revenues, and where are our biggest month where we have expenditures? And so it was a really good cooperative effort with us and some members of council to really refine this report to say, here's the budget that council has approved, and that's why we're looking at it from this standpoint versus comparing it to previous year's actuals. The other component that I think would highlight is we added in the head behind, again, working with council on not to try and put forth and say, you know, for example, if you're looking at that, the special revenue funds are a little bit tricky, but general fund, for example, if you're looking at that report, you may say in January that we had anticipated on the budget to go into the negative. And that's simply because we know that our revenues are less, and that we start picking up some of those additional sales tax revenues as the year goes on. Additionally, with the COVID pandemic, our initial forecasts were looking at a 30% reduction in revenues for 2020. And so we really needed to quickly pivot to give council proper information so they could say, you know, make decisions to say, how do we move forward? How do we mitigate the impacts of this financial crisis? So that's really how we ended up in this summary format. As we move forward, you'll hear finance talk about a system called OpenGov, and it's really a neat tool where you can come in and drill down, and you can keep looking at as much information and detail as you want to, or you can look at it in a more summarily level that's compared to this. So we're really looking forward to that being complete.
Maybe I should rephrase my question. Can you go to the next page on your slide? Yeah, this, now, yeah. If I look at the agenda packet that I got two weeks ago, a week ago, it gives you, for example, on the top right column, 2005 quarter sales tax fund, under operating expenses, estimated year-to-date budget, a number of 6,297. And your form that is being presented shows 247,939. So I'm just confused, or maybe you can explain what the basis is for this, this completely different number in a budget number? I'm not talking about actual numbers, actually the budget, because the budget is, is the budget, that doesn't change so quick. So what changed in your calculation formula?
So certainly, I can, I can speak to that. We put this, Devon compiled this report in a shared document, and we were both accessing it and making changes to it. And, and the original document that went into the packet early on was prematurely created, and some changes were made subsequent to that. And so what I'm presenting is the most updated. We did send out this more updated version, it's kind of at the 11th hour, and my apologies for that. But it was a matter of, it, it was sent out initially before it was fully complete and vetted totally inadvertently, clearly.
Thank you, I, I guess I just looked at it in the wrong version. No problem, appreciate the clarification.
Yeah, earlier today, Olivier, there was an updated packet that Devon sent out, and she mentioned that there, it was more accurate, that they had just not gotten the right information at the right time. So that's one of the challenges. So that's one of the challenges with getting a packet documents on Thursdays the week before. Oftentimes there's some changes, so it's really important to go back and look on Tuesdays and make sure there aren't any specific emails about it. Or I oftentimes have to even go back and look at the agenda again because sometimes things change. And that's understandable, but it's something we have to watch for.
And we, well, be more mindful of that in the future. We will have more time to prepare the reports and get them out as well, which will help minimize that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Okay, so the last grouping of funds is our Internal Service Funds. These are funds that serve internally, the organization internally. We have the General Services Fund, this is really city operations administration, you know, like central warehouse and building maintenance and that sort of thing. Again, January, early numbers off by $39 this month, not a big concern there. The Self-Insurance Fund is our medical claims. We are self-funded and this is where we pay into the fund and then pay out our medical insurance claims through a third-party administrator. And so we're tracking just fine on that one. The Surf Fund is our Capital Equipment Replacement Fund. It's basically the fleet, fleet management. The various departments pay into that and then there's a replacement schedule for the vehicles and vehicle maintenance. This one, you'll notice, also has a little bit of a large fund balance. I think we have been slower to replace some of our vehicles, trying to be prudent and keep them longer to keep the cost down. But yet we've still been contributing based on the formulas that were originally designed and so our balance has grown a little bit. This is another one of the funds that is being analyzed with the assistance of our consultants to try to come up with a strategy to bring that down and save the department some money of not having to pay in so much. And then the last one is the Risk Management Fund. This is basically our insurance fund. Out of here, we pay workers' comp, workers' compensation and property and liability insurance and claims. So this one's kind of difficult to predict just because the nature of what goes into it, the workers' comp claims, you know, I never really know when somebody's going to get injured and what kind of expense is going to hit with that. So it's hard to predict what those transactions are going to look like. So that concludes the financial update. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you, Cynthia. Thank you, Devon.
I do want to give a shout out to the finance team. We have been very far behind in our reporting, we're well aware of that, but we are making great strides. This is January's numbers and then next meeting you will see February's numbers. So we'll be rolling off at a much faster cadence and we'll get caught up here within a couple of months. So, yes.
I just, first of all, a huge shout out to all of you guys because this is vast improvement. So thank you, I appreciate it. I just wondered on the OpenGov, when you anticipate that we and the public might be able to start seeing it and you might be able to give us a demonstration of how it's working and what we can be looking for? Couple of months, what's the anticipated time for us to see?
We're expected to go live with that in June. And we definitely will be providing some demonstrations and trainings and all that to, so the jockey can motor through there and get the information, you know, for yourself. Certainly we will provide it to you as well, but the whole point is transparency for the public to be able to come in and kind of motor around in the finances and see what is of interest to them.
And may I suggest that just down the road, once you're ready, that might be a brief study session for us in the public, just to kind of take us through it 101, some of the things that we should be looking for, just keeping that in mind.
Sure, we're very excited about that tool. In addition to the financial transparency, we'll be able to track progress on the strategic plan and some other things that are, it's very exciting. It's going to be our budget tool as well, so it'll just, we'll have an online budget book, I think it's what it's called. So all kinds of good transparency coming down the line.
Excellent, we like to hear that. We can't wait to see it. So Jose, you mentioned you have some other updates.
Yes, with the hour, I'm going to try to do a couple of these ones really quickly that will go by fast. Just one, just Buckley Park. I know there's a lot of questions going on where we're at. I'll be looking to see if we can schedule an executive session for the 27th, which is next Tuesday for a study session. So you'll be getting a call or an email from Karen to poll the council members on that so I can give a little bit more of an update on where we're at with Buckley Park and grab some information and guidance from the council. Second, I have Nicole, if you're there, hopefully still awake. If you could come on and just give a quick update on any of the conversations you've had on our homeless camps that we've been, that you've been reaching out with.
So, good evening, excuse me, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council and welcome to the new members. I'm Nicole Killian, I'm Assistant Director for Community Development Department and overseeing the homeless camp search. And working with Jose, we'll try and figure out a time where we can update the two new council members on what's going on with the homeless camp search process. But just to give you a quick update, just because of the late hour, we did meet with the state right after our joint meeting with the council and the BOCC. Really, it was just a very intro meeting, gave them a bunch of information. Nina's been working on some public outreach information on what the difference is between a program camp and Purple Cliffs because I think there's a lot of perception in the community that a program camp is going to look like Purple Cliffs. And so they've been working hard to put that information together. And so we provided the state with the information. We met with the regional, Southwest Regional Manager. And so he was going to go back and talk with the Director of Colorado Parks and Wildlife. And so this Friday, we will be meeting with him again after he's talked with the director. And what we told him is we'd like to, as we told you, we'd like to give you guys some feedback within a 30-day period that either tells us we can continue to move forward with this process or it's just not going to happen. And so that's what we're hoping to find out this Friday morning. We've also met with some of the business and property owners in Boto who had just had some concerns and they wanted to have some initial conversations with us. And as you all probably saw today, they've written some letters of concern. They asked, you know, how do they get their concerns to the council and the BOCC? And so we suggested in writing would be the best way. So we'll continue to keep those as part of the public record. What we told them is if this property does continue to move forward, we will definitely be doing some major public outreach with the neighborhood. And that'll occur no matter where the homeless camp property ends up. We'll make sure we do a public outreach process. And again, Nina's been working with Interfaith Alliance to come up with a better program site for that public component so we can explain what a program camp looks like better than we have in the past. And so that's really where we're at right now. So hopefully Friday, we'll have some more specific information on whether this site in, outside of Boto is going to be moving forward or if we're going to need to go back and look at some of these other sites that we had as our number two and number three sites in the analysis. So I can answer any questions you have, but otherwise I will keep you posted as our conversation continues with the state.
Any questions for Nicole? You went off on mute there, Olivier.
Go ahead, Melissa, I think. I was going to let you go, but okay, my question, Olivier, is, or sorry, Nicole, is, so remind us what our option two and three were, first, if you will, please. And then second question is, with the move of the halfway house to the vacant juvenile detention center and the vacancy now, upcoming pending vacancy of the Hilltop House, does that change any of our discussions?
So option two is the Hilltop House and I think it does change the discussions in terms of it's more of a reality if Hilltop House does move to De Niere. So we'll be talking with our group, which is Nina and Chuck Stevens with the county after our Colorado Parks and Wildlife meeting. And so we'll get a little bit more info back from Chuck on that process and timeline. But yes, it does open up the Hilltop House as a high priority and it is number two next to the site. And then number three was looking at that Elks property again. I know there's a lot of concern about that one in terms of how it was purchased and stuff. So I would say Hilltop House is going to be that next one that we're going to jump on and really look at and evaluate.
And how long do you think it will take before that one might be available, the Hilltop House with the move?
We'll have a better idea when we talk with the county, but I think the anticipation is it's about a year from the time they start the renovations and get everything moved in. I'll get a better idea probably on Friday on that. But I think our anticipation is anything we do, it's, Purple Cliffs is going to have to remain for the next, through the summer and winter. And then hopefully next spring, we'll have some movement on a new location or.
Great, great use of options. So thank you so much. I was wondering about that. Thank you.
My question is partially answered because what you're discussing is the second level, I guess, housing or shelter. But there's also the basic shelter, yeah, the very basic campsite. What would that be in these discussions?
So we were hoping it's this site that we're talking to the state about would be the program camp. And that still opens up the opportunity for us to look at Hilltop House as a more of an indoor shelter. And maybe one of the options was possibly, Purple Cliffs isn't needed anymore if we have those two. I think there's some, there's some people that believe Purple Cliffs is still going to be needed for those that don't want to go into a program camp or a shelter situation. And so I think those discussions need to continue to occur. But at this point, we're hoping that the site will be that outdoor managed camp. And so we'll know more hopefully on Friday about that.
I appreciate all the efforts there. I think it was very well discussed during the campaigning sessions. I'm just concerned that having Purple Cliffs open for at least a year, according to what you say, so another winter, will require investment to make it safe, wildfire and a whole range of other issues. So I'm not sure if that discussion and those investments are being pushed forward at the same time or if everything is on standstill until we hear about the other potential location.
And I can address that, but Jose, I don't know if you would like to address those discussions?
Go ahead, Nicole.
So the county is working with city staff on an MOU and looking at what would need to be, occur at Purple Cliffs for it to continue on a temporary basis. And I believe there's going to be council liaisons with the Board of County Commissioner liaison and also both the city and county managers involved in that conversation as that moves forward. But those discussions have started.
We actually are meeting on Thursday afternoon. Any other questions? Jose, do you have other? Thank you, Nicole, appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
Nicole, appreciate it.
Thank you for standing away for us.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I do have one more item. It is the item on the 29th, 29 and a half street crossing that has generated a lot of discussion. We do have Amber here to do a presentation as well as Julie with, Colorado Department of Transportation, sorry, it's late, trying to get everything going, to answer any questions that we may have, but we just wanted to provide an informational piece to it, just knowing of the feedback that some of y'all have received here over the past few days. And then with this, just going to give the council an update. My computer's about to restart, I can't snooze it anymore with the updates, apparently that my computer's about to go. So it's about a 20-minute clock that's ticking down. So if it does log me off, I will find somewhere else in here in City Hall to jump on and get on. So if I come off, it'll only be temporary and I'll jump back on. But with that, I'll pass it on to Amber Blake. Thank you.
Before we move on, may I say something? I'm a little bit concerned because this project has generated so much public interest. And here we are at 11 o'clock at night, it wasn't listed on the agenda separately. And I'm concerned that the people who are really interested in it won't be able to hear this or have the opportunity to comment. So how might we handle that?
I'll have to talk with Mitchell specifically on how we can definitely post this segment of the Zoom session on the website as well as placing the presentation on the website. We definitely also just wanted to give the council the information as well, which is an important part because I know you're receiving questions. And we definitely can take a look at doing some more outreach efforts to some of the people who've also sent some questions in that we've been contacted with to get them this information as well.
And eventually, I would like to ask the city attorney questions of liability regarding this. I don't know if it's appropriate now or after, after the multimodal advisory board meeting tomorrow. My main concern is for all of council to know is that if, you know, the head of a school has concerns about the safety for children crossing and it is counter to the way the children are taught to cross streets, I do have concerns with taking a different position. And I would just eventually, like council, once we've discussed this fully, to consider whether or not it makes sense for the city attorney to look into any potential liabilities should this go forward with the crossing that's at a different location than the recommendation of the head of school.
And just as a, just real quick, just to make sure, especially for the new councilors, this is just an information update. There is no action that can be taken tonight. We really just wanted to be able to kind of brief the council and give information on this process so that the council and the public, and we'll figure a better way to make sure we get everyone in because of the late hour, gets this information of how this project was derived.
So are we going to have a discussion about it tonight? Because we were going to still go through the informational, but will we be, when will we be responding? Because I think we all have some input into this.
Absolutely. So we'll have the presentation go through. Council can ask questions of what they have some questions on in regards to the presentation and how this came through. That's why we also have Colorado Department of Transportation here. I mean, the intention was to give you the information to be able to ask questions, to be able to answer some of those questions. And then if we needed to move with some direction later, it'd be something that we could schedule at a different time.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, city council members. Welcome, Olivier and Jessica, it's the mayor and mayor pro tem for your new positions and Melissa. So this evening, I have a presentation for you. We also have Jennifer Allison from CDOT and Julie Constan as well to make sure that we're able to answer all of your questions. I am going to err on the side of reviewing all of this information because this will be aired for two weeks on DGOV and then the presentation will be in its complete form for members of the public who are interested in reviewing it on our website. And that will hopefully assist with future public outreach and be able to provide that information to the public in a comprehensive manner. So I will share my screen. Do you see that presentation? All right, I'm assuming that you do. So we called this project the 30th Street Connect.
Actually, Amber, it's not visible.
Oh, here.
It's a line, Amber. It's like a tiny little line.
Paused, okay, so we're going to do this and we're going to try again. Screen share. How does that look?
That's better.
Thank you. Okay. So the project that we were speaking of tonight is the 30th Street Connect project. We'll begin with an overview of the project background. The need was identified for this project in the North Main Avenue Mobility Plan and the 2016 Multimodal Transportation Plan. The project funding was identified by city staff in coordination with CDOT. And city staff submitted a transportation, or CDOT staff submitted a Transportation Innovation Council Innovation Council application grant for $25,000. And city staff authored the grant application for the Multimodal Options Funding Grant. We had five partners from the community who submit letters of support that were part of this application. The five partners writing the letters of support were the Multimodal Advisory Board, the Business Improvement District, 9R School District, Mountain Middle School, and CDOT Region 5. The funding that was awarded to this project from the grants were the $75,000 from the Multimodal Options Fund and $25,000 from the Transportation Innovation Council. I think it's important to note that CDOT is the fiscal agent on this and is funding the remaining portion of the project, in addition to the city's local match for the grant. So in the project status, we are currently in final design and CDOT is designing the project. CDOT intends to bid this project in the third quarter of this year, and the project will be constructed the end of this year and through next year. The total project cost estimated for this project is approximately $400,000. You can see in this table here how that funding is broken out. So the city with the Multimodal Options Funding Grant, as well as our local match, and the Transportation Improvement Program Grant, or Transportation Innovation Council Grant, is bringing to the table $195,095, of which comes from local funding. CDOT is bringing to the table $205,000 for a total project cost of $400,000. Should this project be $450,000, CDOT will cover that additional $50,000. So the intent of this project was to address a lack of safe crossing of US 550. As you can see here in this picture, this stretch of roadway does not have a signalized intersection from 27th Street to 32nd Street. There's a lack of east-west pedestrian connectivity, other than the striped crosswalks at the signalized intersections at 27th Street and 32nd Street. And the intent is also to provide transit stop connections. There's a transit stop right here south of Birds, and there is a transit stop on the opposite side of the street for the northbound trolley. Again, to highlight the safety concern. The safety concern is a lack of pedestrian crossing in the corridor that creates significant concerns for both pedestrians and motorists, as pedestrians frequently attempt to cross this five-lane, high-speed highway at or near 30th Street, rather than walk the distance between 27th and 32nd to cross at a signalized intersection. In this map, you will see that there were five locations that were looked at. These locations in this area are at near Birds, south of Birds. And then there are two locations or configurations at 30th Street, which I will talk about both of this evening. Safety considerations that were taken into account when analyzing the location, the preferred location for this project, were accessibility, infrequent signalization, high-speed vehicles or vehicle speeds that are high, visibility of pedestrians, pedestrian and vehicular conflicts at intersections, the width of intersections, proximity to school, multiple lanes of traffic that reduce the visibility of the pedestrians, the lack of visual cues to direct motorists, blind spots for motorists, unreliable motorist behavior, this is a freight route, and jaywalking. So there is a great deal of research on mid-block crossings. So you might ask, why a mid-block crossing with a rapid flashing beacon and pedestrian refuge? When we, and I'm not going to read these for you, I'm going to highlight on them. So FHWA focuses on the fact that vehicle speeds are higher in these types of areas with a multi-lane situation, and pedestrians are less visible. So intersection crossings become less practical and are often more dangerous. This is counterintuitive to what we have in our downtown. However, in this situation, it's safer to install a mid-block crossing because it installs the signal, not necessarily a signal, but it installs the signage with the flashing light. It allows a pedestrian to cross two lanes of traffic and be protected by a refuge built of concrete, and then activate the signal again and cross the other two lanes of traffic. Motor vehicles yield at mid-block crossings more often than at four-leg intersections. And I'm citing the studies in case anyone in the public or all of you want to go read Additionally, and this is from the CDOT Roadway Design Guide, pedestrian crossings at uncontrolled approaches should be designed as a mid-block crossing for safety. Pedestrian Refuge Island should be installed on four-lane roadways. This is a five-lane roadway here, so we'll take that center turn lane and turn it into the pedestrian refuge that protects the pedestrian from crossing five lanes at high speeds and gives them a safer place to stand as they cross, and increases visibility. Rapid flashing beacons are used to increase pedestrian visibility, and a raised median should be there to allow for the left sign to be mounted adjacent. So you have this raised section here, it's not flat. And then the volume and speed combination, a median will be installed with the rapid flashing beacon. So this is not just installing a crosswalk. Additional considerations that were taken into account in defining the, or identifying the preferred location, were transit connectivity, east-west pedestrian connectivity, impact to businesses and neighbors' ingress and egress, traffic and engineering considerations such as utility conflicts and turning movements, signal warrant evaluation, and then finally the evaluation of public input. There have been mentioned in some emails about Multimodal Advisory Board and the role that was played and the conversations that took place. So the Multimodal Advisory Board did provide a letter of support for the funding application. And the project was presented and discussed at four MAB meetings. On January 15th, at the MAB meeting, the board received a presentation from CDOT staff on the location alternatives. The board discussed the project and had consensus that the board preferred the 30th Street location. There was consensus, however, there was no formal action taken. On February 17th, at the Multimodal Advisory Board meeting, the crossing was again discussed, and staff provided an update on the survey and submitted the information that had been submitted that showed that businesses were in general supportive of the project. And staff noted that locations three and two, three is at 30th Street and two is the preferred alternative, were the most preferred. But CDOT would be making the final decision based on multiple factors, including public comments. This is CDOT's roadway. One of the board members asked why the city did not make a recommendation on the webpage with the survey, and staff did make sure to let them know that the webpage presented the facts, there was a pro-con analysis, but it did not provide a recommendation from the city. A board member asked if the board's recommended location had made the survey, and staff confirmed that location number four, which was the board's preferred alternative, was on that survey. On February 17th, at the MAB meeting, again, a discussion occurred with the board members, recommending, MAB recommended the locations to CDOT, both at 30th Street, location three and four. A board member requested staff's recommendation, and staff let the board know that location number two was staff's preferred alternative, the one south of Birds Egress. Another board member suggested that a board recommendation to city council on location three, based on the survey results, be brought forward. Staff confirmed that its recommendation was location two because of mid-block safety aspects and complex with the pedestrians from vehicles turning at the intersection at 30th Street. There were questions, oh dear, there were questions from a board member regarding why location three is preferred by the board if safety was not the board's main priority. Another board member said that they didn't think people would use it and that precedent had already been set at the intersection. At this point, no formal recommendation was made to the city council because some board members said they weren't ready to make a motion and tabled it until March. At the March board meeting, staff presented the city CDOT preferred location, again, location two, south of Birds Egress. And a board member said they didn't understand why staff would want to teach children to cross at mid-block and why other crossings weren't at mid-block. And I'll speak to that in a moment. Staff clarified that they'd worked with Mountain Middle School to teach the children about a mid-block crossing, and no formal action was taken by the board at this meeting. Additional stakeholder outreach took place. There were two presentations to the North Main Business Improvement District, one-on-one outreach to businesses in the corridor, and two mailings were sent to resident and property owners. And the boundaries of the mailing are listed here. There was notification of the survey and project status updates. And then finally, there was the survey that took place on the city's website. There was overwhelming support for the project and 236 survey responses. And we'll go into the preferred alternative. So the preferred project location is 29th and a half street, just south of Birds Egress. And this is preferred because it meets FHWA and CDOT's safety guidelines. It minimized pedestrian and vehicular conflicts. The location has great, or good sight distances for both vehicles and pedestrians. It minimizes impacts to current traffic flows and patterns. It minimizes impacts to businesses, and is as close to midway between the existing signalized intersections of 32nd and 27th. It does provide connectivity for all pedestrian users in the North Main corridor, and is not focused just at that school crossing. We are aware of that. I'd like to look at this preferred location in terms of turning movements. We had a business owner that voiced concern with access for the freight delivery to the business, and wanted to ensure in the discussion that the median and the pedestrian refuge would not block the turning movement in for the freight trucks, and would not block the customers exiting the business. And as you can see from these graphics, this intersection allows for left-hand turns out of the business, and it allows for both vehicles and freight movements into the business for deliveries. On the other side of the street, it does make a tighter turn radius. You don't have a long stacking value for this hotel, but it does allow a turning movement that gets you into the hotel. This location provides connecting access between the hotel and the business, whom my understanding have an agreement and a partnership where there's breakfast and food provided. And there's, from the email that we received, a lot of senior and disabled customers that are going from the hotel to the business, and this provides a safe crossing for that location. Now, we'll touch on the project location at 30th Street. There were higher levels of concerns at this four-way, unsignalized intersection. There's no medians or access control. In one of these options, it totally blocks turning movements, and that is this, this one. Will block your turning movements out of 30th Street onto 550 for left-hand turn. The other one has some additional turning movements, but has, is promoting unsafe maneuvers that could result in pedestrian car conflicts. And as a result, this has to be an extended median to provide safety. The 30th Street intersection was looked at to see if we could put a full signalized intersection at that location, and it doesn't meet signal warrants. And as we have heard previously in our discussions with CDOT, signal warrants must be met in order to install a signal. We had those discussions with the crossing at 12th Street, the at grade. And then this is the four-way with side-street stop controls. You have your stop signs at the cross street here. So I will now get into some responses to counselor questions that were emailed to staff, and then would like to respond to counselor noteworthy's question about crossing mid-block rather than at intersection. So are there other mid-block crossings in town? We do have one currently. It is located here between Oak and Aspen, over in the Riverview neighborhood, right? Adjacent Riverview is right up the street here, Riverview Elementary. And this was installed as part of the Florida Road Project. So you see here, you have the mid-block crossing, the small pedestrian refuge, and you cross the other side of the street. When we are looking at projects, this says, please provide data supporting a cyclist will ride down the block to a crossing rather than cross at the corner in line with a bike route. So there's a couple of items that we do take into account. One, there are many different types of riders, one. We have, this is an excerpt from the multimodal plan. Strong and fearless, enthused and confident, interested and concerned, and no way, no how. And so in order to provide data showing that a cyclist will ride down the block, we do not have that data available for council. However, from the research that we were able to do, and from understanding human behavior, if I am riding with my five-year-old child, when they were five, I would definitely ride my bike down the sidewalk to the protected intersection, the protected crossing that's mid-block. If I'm by myself and I'm a strong and fearless cyclist that's comfortable commuting along Cano Del Rio, I will treat myself on a bicycle as a vehicle, and bicycles are considered vehicles, and I can take the lane, I can cross the roadway. So I think we need to look at who, who it is, and we don't have control over human behavior and what folks are going to do and what decisions they're going to make. However, they are more visible, there's a protected median, and it is a striped crosswalk. I'm going to touch base on the striped crosswalk that councilor knows where the, or Mayor Protem knows where they brought up. In Safety Town, and I obtained the information from our police department for what is taught, the actual documents that they review and teach to the students. The students in Safety Town are taught to cross at a crosswalk. And it's very specific in the language and in what they teach, that you're crossing at the striped crosswalk. Sometimes they call them piano keys. And not necessarily at an intersection. And you're supposed to look left and right and left again. So we did double-check that because I had had a concern voiced to staff that was, Safety Town teaches to cross at intersection. So we want to make sure that that's noted. And this is a crosswalk. And so again, while mid-block crossings may not solve all the concerns for cyclists, an intersection crossing would put cyclists at a higher risk than mid-block crossings because of those conflicts. And mid-block crossings, for the same reason, make it safer for pedestrians as well. Will a cyclist walk half a block in the wrong direction to get to the crossing, or are they going to run across the street at the corner? I think it depends on who the person is and what their comfort level is. But we do have a citation here from the FHWA Course on Bicycle Pedestrian Transportation that states that pedestrians will rarely go out of their way to cross at an intersection unless they're rewarded with an improved crossing. And this is an improved crossing. So we're happy to take questions. CDOT is available here to answer any questions that you might have.
Amber, can you go back to that previous page, please? Because you didn't, you didn't note that most will take the most direct route possible to get to their destination, even if this means crossing several lanes of high-speed traffic?
Yes, they will. So the shortest route, sorry, I didn't read the whole thing. Thank you for pointing that out. And folks will take the shortest path. And, but when you weigh, is it worth having the additional complex? And I think I'll be more than happy to have our, our traffic engineers who specialize in this speak to this if council would like us to. But it was definitely considered, and the preference is, and the field, the data is showing us from what we're seeing, that the safer location is at 29th and a half.
Thank you, Amber, for that presentation. I'm going to just ask, mention something here. I'm going to keep it short because it's an informational nature, this update. But there have been concerns from our community and the potential disconnect concerning what was discussed during the prior meetings. So I expect there will be more response in the next period of time. The only concern I would like to add- next period of time. The only concern I would like to add is the, the long-term and the vision associated with this crossing. And that's meaning if, if, if the use is significant and Mountain Middle School keeps growing, I'm sure there will be maybe a need for a proper crossing with traffic lights stopping full traffic like you have on 32nd and 27th. So that vision and that growth potential is something maybe missing. But thank you for the presentation and let's see where this all leads us.
Thank you.
And I'll just jump in. Thank you Amber for the presentation. I know tomorrow is the Multimodal Advisory Board Meeting and it'll be discussed again. And again, my concern in raising, perhaps seeking councils read on it is the potential liability given, you know, I appreciate you looking into Safety Town. I would feel better if I knew that the city attorney had looked at any potential liability, particularly if the head of school as opposed to the selection of 29th and a half Street.
I would just add my concerns as well, if I can, that I too had conversations with community residents and, and had a school at Mountain Middle School. There are some real concerns. And, and I, I do think that with this being such a busy intersection with so many students, I think they have about 255 students there now, that, you know, and they're encouraging a lot of bike usage, that we really have to think through this carefully. I'm very interested in having, in getting their input as well from this presentation. Amber, you did a good job doing this presentation. I'd like to see what their input is based on the results of this presentation because there does seem to be a disconnect in the community. And, you know, the thought of crossings that should be a natural fit, this just seems to go very counter to that. I appreciated seeing the drawings though, that it's helpful to see what that would look like. But I'm very concerned about it and I think we need to have further discussion when it's not close to midnight, where we can hear from our community and have a thorough discussion as council about this. So I'm hoping we can continue this dialogue.
I'd like to echo that when it's not so late at night and there can be more people involved. And if we've heard from Miller, I know Mountain's been really vocal about it, but I'm not sure that Miller has. And is Mountain planning an expansion, is in that right? And where's that going? And how would that affect, would it affect this, I guess, at all? Is a good, kind of something to think about. But yeah, I think more community involvement and when it's not 11:30 at night.
I also would like to suggest that I'm sure this is not the first mid-street, mid-block crossing that CDOT has done. And I'm sure that there's data about how that's all worked and what makes them, are they safer, are they not safer, are they used? What's the behavior of people? You know, I remember when the intersection of 160 and 550 was proposed with that left turn lane, it went all the way across the thing and way off over this way and then down 160 and everybody thought it was crazy and it seems to work pretty well. So I'd really like to show, to see, not, you know, don't just tell me this, show me the data essentially, okay? So if it's out there, it's out there and if it's not, it's not. And I agree with midnight and at a time when the rest of the community can have some input.
And just-
Oh, I'm just sorry. I just saw Julie's hand raised and I'd want to make sure she had an opportunity to talk to, but please come.
I just wanted, I just want to say for me, the data would be something that's similar to five lanes of crossing, not just a, something similar in a two-lane thing. So something that's truly similar to what we're asking particularly children to do.
Julie, did you?
I do. So a couple of things. First, it's late, so if I come across the runway, I apologize. CDOT is funding over half of the project here. So it is a joint partnership with the city. The concern that you have with viability, we're building a crossing across the state highway. I just don't see any liability that would be out there for the city through and go. Second, timing is definitely of the essence. As Amber indicated, we are trying to get this project out to advertisements this fall if we possibly can. The longer we go through this process with you guys, the less likely it is we're gonna get this thing constructed and during this winter timeframe. Winter is a great time to be working on the highway. Winter of '21 would be a good time to work in on the highway because we're working in concrete. We can do that work in the wintertime and there won't be as much traffic out there on the highway as you guys are all aware of. And then, third, if you guys really want us to look at the 30th Street Crossing, it's gonna delay the project. We're gonna have to really reach out to all the business owners that are impacted by that 30th Street Crossing. The only way we're gonna be able to do 30th Street is if we limit left-hand turning movements out of there. The places where we have those pedestrians are, are these in the, at the other intersections in town, we have limited left-hand turning movements at all those other locations. Take a drive-through, take a hard look at it. That also means more median, that also means more cost. The $400,000 option that we're looking at right now is that South Birds option. When we start adding more concrete median, then that's gonna add more costs which could potentially jeopardize the project too. Since CDOT is coming up with a substantial piece of it, I'll have to continue to look to confirm that we can, how much extra we could bring to the table. So, and the community has definitely wanted us to try and expedite this project as much as possible. And so just, more than anything, some more food for thought for the council to consider as part of this whole process.
Thank you. Any other questions or thoughts on this topic? Okay. And Jose, do you have anything else to speak to?
Thankfully, I do not. That is my, that is my update. And I just, again, just want to congratulate the new councillors. Councillor Buell and Councillor Bosman is looking very much forward to working with you. Congratulations, Councillor Yusef on your reelection and congratulations, Mayor Protem Noseworthy and Mayor Baxter. Very much looking forward to working with y'all and thank you for your patience this evening. And let's try not to do another 11:31 for a while.
Indeed. So we normally don't vote to adjourn, but in Robert's rules, you would, you would do that. You would motion to adjourn and then you'd vote. But I'm gonna bet we're all ready to go. So, goodnight all.